That's being administered for King's Corner, for STEEP, for Lot Tip. So yeah, we're thinking that's probably the best use and the Yukon School seems to think that they would have somebody that would fit well there.
Okay, okay, good. Brad, that's from their public administration program?
It is.
Mayor, thank you. That is an outstanding report. So many good pieces of news. I couldn't count them all. A couple of comments. I'm very pleased to see the road restoration funds at the level they've been supported in this budget. I'm of course delighted to see that the mill rate can actually decrease if everything holds true. The bathrooms in the high school have been a long time coming, as have the new classrooms. So lots and lots and lots of good news. Thank you very much for your work and also to everyone else who contributed to that.
Absolutely.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Mayor, does the mayor assistant position, does that include the food pantry work?
It does. So that number that is still our placeholder, as you can see, we reduced it just a little bit, but it does include the full complement. So it will be the social service aspect as well as the mayor's assistant.
Okay.
And we expect to fill that within the next week.
Very good. And then I'd be remiss if I did not say this, because I think people need to be cognizant of it if they're not already. But even though the mill rate's going down, in some cases, people's taxes are going up horrifically. As an example, the Highlands, a small ranch, almost $800 a year, a larger ranch, almost $1,000 a year. And I understand how it's happening because it's the distribution of the higher-priced properties not going up as much as the lower-priced properties. But I think a, as I look at one here in the Highlands, a ranch, a larger ranch, $907 a year, that's going to be a tough sell. And I don't know how to fix it. I just think we need to be aware of it. And I think I can explain it as with my real estate background, but our past real estate background. But it's going to be a tough sell.
Yeah, I agree. And I had commented on a social media comment about that, which is, you know, the numbers, the numbers that we have tested appear very accurate and the assessor has done more. But accuracy does not translate to reduced pain on the tax bill. So really what it comes down to, it's a statutory issue with the state in that when we did the reassessment in 2010, and it was still a depressed market following the Great Recession, it was lower then. And now we happen to do a revale now, which is statutorily required. And we see a market that is probably as hot as it's ever been with as low of inventory as we've probably ever seen. So it's a perfect storm of some difficult situations for particularly the modest to mid-level home values.
Agreed Chairman Davis and with you, Mayor. It's helpful to understand, but it doesn't make the numbers change for those homeowners. So thank you for explaining that. I'm going to make a request. My internet has bounced a couple of times. I've been kicked off the call before we got started twice. So I'm going to ask councilors Malone and Ingalls, if you guys aren't hearing me and I seem unresponsive, it's because I am. So if you would pick up with the conversation and the questions, I'll be joining back as soon as I can. But so far, so good. And I will keep my video off to help that. So turning that off now. And I think we're ready to start in with questions on the budget. So let's do that. Mayor, on your section of the budget in your department, I had only one question, which Marcia has already cleared up. The version that I downloaded a couple of days ago showed an operating expense change, as you mentioned. That, so that was my question why it went up so much. And now we know the answer. And I think that's going to be explained. But very responsible budget. I had no other questions. I can see that one of the things we do every year is we look at past years to see what the trend is year over year. Right now, we have spreadsheet looking F17 all the way through the proposed year. We also compare year-to-date spending. So that's how the Finance Committee bases a lot of their questions. And I think I can answer the questions that I would ask easily. For example, printing and binding expenses this year are low, and that's because of the newsletter, as you mentioned. So I won't ask any more questions. I'll turn it over to the other two councilors, actually, any of the councilors, and let's see what questions the others have.
Mayor, I just want to ask, your assistant is a .5 position?
No, that is a full-time position. The, so Christina Hostetler, who is the town hall floater, she is the individual that sits out of the office closest to the front hallway. That is a limited position.
Okay. Is that Christina, the ATO?
No, different one.
I'm totally confused. Okay.
Yeah. So we have had, I think, under Mayor Rodolico, he brought in a town hall floater, and this individual is designed to work essentially in any department that needs a little bit of backup. So if somebody's out in the clerk's office, Christina will go over and serve duty there. And she will do that essentially in anybody's office in town hall.
Nice. Okay.
Mayor, I think that you had said originally that you had one and a half FTEs. Currently, he has one and a half FTEs. The assistant makes it two and a half.
Okay.
Plus the custodian. Yeah.
Got it. Thank you, Marcia.
I may have missed this, but under operating expenses, it went from $26,000 to $19,000. What's the explanation? You may have mentioned.
This was where we have 26 to 19. I'm not seeing that up there. So the only thing I can mention, Mary, was we're bringing in an intern from the University of Connecticut. And there wasn't really a place to put that person in the budget. So it seemed to just make sense to drop him into my budget.
Good. Got it. Okay.
Okay. Other questions?
I'm all set.
Thank you, Tom. Andrea, you're good?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
And if anything else, don't hesitate to ask me.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor actually has two more sections.
There we go. So, okay, so here are support items. As you know, we've been paying almost $11,000 annually to handle fire hydrant maintenance, includes the flushing. That's just a pass-through, I believe, to Groton Utilities. The contract maintenance and leases, anything like copiers and things like that that appear here, these are all contractual items. They're in there. ADA compliance, we have $1,000 in there that we're going to have to do that again this year because with a new incoming mayor's assistant, that person has to get certified for ADA. So they're going to have to go that class as well. Advertising and legal notices, we trimmed that back a little bit. It was a little bit lower this year. We don't think it's necessarily COVID-related, but it was lower. So we opted to pare that back a bit. And we think that that is also accurate. We reduced our other supplies. Again, not seeing a lot of use. So we felt like that was warranted. Postage came down a good bit. We did have postage that was separate for the election, but this is not that. So the election-based postage was handled through the clerk's office. And that is really that for that section. And Ian, if you want to scroll down beyond that, so that was almost a 10% reduction in that department.
What is your other? Is there another?
Yeah, Ian, it is the Health District probate. One right under the mayor.
Yeah, the Health District, I can tell you now, the Health District ledgeline went up just a little bit this year. They have kept their per capita cost very, very low for us. And this year, it did adjust up, but it's a very small number. Let's see what that number is right there.
Last one, Ian.
Yep. There it is. There it is. Yep. So we just ticked up ever so slightly, 1% increase. And as you know, they are all making their money, and then some are earning their money, and then some, I would say, during the pandemic. So that increased. And then Ian, if you want to scroll up just a little bit. Okay, there's probate. I just saw probate. Probate's the same. Probate comes in two parts. It comes for the service itself, and it comes for the leasing, the sharing of the leasing costs of the probate judge's office in Groton. So that again has remained flat, which we're very happy about. And I don't think we have, we don't have the coverage in here, the cyber coverage is not in this section, right?
It is. It's the bottom line under property insurance.
Okay. Then it's a $20,000 one, I think. Yep, there it is. Okay. Just above the bottom line, you'll see $20,000. Kerma does not, or insured, does not cover cyber to the level that actually does a whole lot for the town. And there were a number of municipalities in the past two years that have been hit and had, in many cases, their data and their infrastructure destroyed. So we made a painful decision. It's kind of like buying an umbrella on a sunny day. But we made that painful decision to move ahead with cyber coverage, which, and Marcia, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a couple million dollars? Or is it a million?
It's a million-dollar policy. We had the opportunity to get a $2 million policy. It was almost double the premium.
That's right. So we got $1 million of coverage for the $20,000. And that came not through Kerma, but by way of. And now that's it.
I think we want to point out, Mayor, that the other policies, the other coverages were kept flat by Kerma for.
That's true. Yeah, and that's true. Kerma has been very good to us. And, you know, we do receive rebate checks from them annually if coverages go well across the board for them. And they cover about 158 municipalities in the state of Connecticut. So yes, they didn't keep those flat, but the cyber was important for us.
Mayor, this is Andrea. Help me understand how they land at a million in coverage. I would think it would be higher.
Well, so it really comes down to, it comes down to the data and the equipment. And we just, basically, we had a choice. We could either go $1 million or $2 million. And they just come up with very round numbers for us. So we opted for a million, which we felt was sufficient. And, you know, a lot of our data is stored in the cloud at this point, too, like the assessor's office and things like that. So we do have other avenues to recover stuff if needed. But we hope not.
So the million is cost of recovery?
No, the million dollars, it's up to $1 million. So if we had a problem and if we lost infrastructure and data, we have up to $1 million that they will cover us for rebuilding our network and our infrastructure. Now, and this does not include the schools. Is that right, Marcia?
It does include the schools.
It does even include the schools. Okay.
It's an all-in-one dollars, though. So let's say the schools needed $1 million to redo that, to redo their network. There would be no money left. So it's a per-year maximum amount.
And so do we have, you know, unfortunately, we're, you know, you're looking at really sad situations to understand what it might cost to rebuild that. So we have reason to believe that should our infrastructure be hijacked, that a million would cover what, that would cover our effort to rebuild.
Well, the problem with cyber attacks is that there's no way of knowing what exactly they're going to attack and how much it's going to cost to rebuild what they got into. But like the mayor said, with most of our stuff online in the cloud, the companies that we go through for those services have many redundancies to protect data. We don't really know, like, how Kerma came up with those numbers. But we know, we knew that this being the first year that we're going to have this standalone cyber coverage, we didn't think the budget could handle a $40,000 hit for the 2 million. So we thought that 1 million was a good entrance point. And then we will get more information from our representative at Kerma to find out what their methodology was for coming up with those numbers.
Sure. Okay. So I would be interested if you do end up with that information. I would be interested in hearing it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Does it also cover, if it was a ransom attack, would it cover ransom payments?
Yes.
Yes.
It would cover ransom?
Yes.
Actually, Kerma has a really good, and I assume this underwriter that we're going with, they have, they treat it as a pool situation, and they can get in, they can get in kind of at the beginning of the process and negotiate. And they've got all the tools for how to hopefully not have to pay out anything.
Sad sign of the times.
Yep.
Yes, it is.
On a lighter note, I would like to take the opportunity to comment on the town newsletter. I've been participating in these sessions since 2009, I think, with Council Davis. And every single year, Council Davis asked about the multiple newsletters that the town was supporting. And there were many. There was never a clear answer as to why there were so many. There were some answers. But this year, the mayor has taken steps with that. And as we all know, we have an outstanding newsletter, which is getting great reviews. And I believe at lower cost. It's a much better vehicle for communicating what's going on in town. I think it makes people feel better, and I think it gets read more. So just wanted to thank Chairman Davis for all those questions, all those years, and for the mayor for taking action. So, good job.
Yeah. One item to add to that in closing is that we have done well with Bill and Sigrid, the owners of Essex Printing. And they reached out to me on Monday and said, we have an idea for a pilot program to have some high school students do some writing. And we thought Ledger might be good to be our pilot. And I thought that was a great idea. So I reached out to Amanda at the high school. And we already have a couple young writers and two English teachers that are going to be working with young writers. And they are already in communications with Events Magazine. So not this coming issue, but the summer issue, you will see Ledger High School students writing articles as well. So another really great thing.
Great idea. Okay, we are a little bit ahead of schedule. But I think if everyone wants to continue on to the next department, which is finance, why don't we get a little more ahead of schedule? And then if anyone needs to take a break, we can take one. Does that sound like a plan?
Sounds like a plan.
Did we switch up MIS?
That's because I skipped MIS. I apologize. Is Regina in the room?
Yes, she is.
Okay, let's go ahead and do MIS then. Hi, Regina.
Okay. How are you?
Hi.
Good, thank you.
Good, good, good.
Okay. If you need me to scroll anywhere, you guys just let me know. I'll just leave it right here.
Okay. Basically, most of the items are either 3% or 5% increase because of the contracts that we have with them. This year, we will be renegotiating what we do with the Munis software as far as, you know, Tyler. We're going to renegotiate that. We're running out of time for that contract. We did actually decrease for the Walsh software because we did remove the tax bridge. And Ian actually found a way around that doing something a little different. So we saved ourselves $1,000 on that. So kudos to him for figuring that one out. Let's see if there's any other. Oh, we did put in a line item for the ClearGov. We actually put that in MIS because it seemed like a good place to put it. So you'll see that line item as a new item for $11,900. This is the first year of it. I do believe that the subscription fee is actually $9,500. So going forward, it's going to be $9,500. This year, it was a little more because we actually paid them half of the installation and all, and configuration. So we'll see that drop down next year. Let's see.
So which line item is that, Regina?
That is under, let's see, Software Support and Maintenance. And it is the last item. Just added it to that section.
Got it. Okay.
Okay. And the rest, I'm, you know, again, it's the, you know, 3% or 5% increase based on our contracts. I am looking into alternatives for the fax lines. You know, we carry this $4,000, $4,100. And it really, you know, for 10 lines, it's like, t whiz, you know? I could see having one for just a strict emergency so we could communicate. But, you know, I'm looking into other options. We have to be careful because the faxes that we have, we may have things that we don't want other people to see, like in nursing and social services. And, you know, that's why they fax things, is because it's so safe. So we're looking at different ways. I have reached out to our telephone vendor to see if maybe there's some other way we can do this with being secure at the same time. So I'm waiting to hear back from him on some proposals for that. So the $4,000, you know, $4,100 for, you know, for the fax lines is, you know, we have to keep some, you know, the alarm systems that we have down here and in the town hall. Those have to be kept as lines, you know, copper lines. So we're always going to have a few, but, you know, 10 of them is kind of high. So, let's see.
Before you move off that, Regina, are you looking at e-fax?
I am looking at that. I'm looking at a bunch of different electronic faxing.
Okay.
Not too many of them can actually promise me that the security will be there. So that's the big thing is, you know, you don't want patient information to get out there and, you know, cause a problem. So for those lines, we have to be really careful.
Yeah, so the big ones I see out there are write fax.
Yep.
And I think if you talk to the bigger providers, I would have to believe they've got some permissions that could allow for security.
Yep.
But yeah, I totally agree with you. Fax lines today, paying for individual lines is, I mean, very few places are still paying for individual analog lines for fax. So good idea.
Exactly. So if we can save some money, well, we'll try to do it. Let's see. The rest is the same. And then there's actually two items under computer software. And that is TeamViewer and Zoom. As you well know, you know, we've gotten into this realm because of the pandemic, but they're actually useful. We, you know, we pay right now, let's see, for TeamViewer, it's an annual fee. And that's allowing us to do amazing things just remotely. So we can hop onto anybody's machine, you know, just fix whatever it needs to be fixed. And then, yeah, exactly, exactly. So TeamViewer is very handy. And, you know, we've kind of wanted to go to it for quite some time. And this kind of pushed us into it, especially when we started with, you know, the whole remote, you know, scenario that we had. So it really is a benefit. And of course, the Zoom, you know very well, you know, how that works. And for, you know, for our 10 lines that we have, the licenses right now, we actually pay $2,400 bucks, you know, 200 bucks a month. So, you know, for $200 a month, it's just an amazing product to use. So we went from WebEx to Zoom. And it actually offers us a lot more. Early on, Zoom wasn't as, you had people, you know, popping in, putting their cats on, you know, to a meeting. So we didn't have any security. We didn't have, you know, some of the enhancements that they have now. So WebEx served the purpose at the time, but now Zoom has passed WebEx. So we actually changed to that. So it's a good scenario. You know, we will, I don't know, we may actually keep it, you know, it's something that's very useful for, like you, Bill, you know, when you can't come to a meeting or whatever, you know, even if the pandemic ends, which I don't know about that. But anyway, so I think that's it. Are there any questions on any items?
Yep.
Again, most of it is contractual.
Yep. You may have mentioned this, repairs and maintenance.
Yep.
Year-to-date is at 26%. And two years ago, we were at $5,800. Now we're up almost, we're over $1,000 more. So what's going into that?
Uh, let's see if I can find that item. Let's see. That was the, that was down in... That, I do believe that that, that basic repairs and maintenance has gone up because there is a 3% annual increase for the Eaton UPS that we have. So we have an Eaton UPS outside, well, actually in the copy room near my office. And that went up 3%. So that definitely increased. We also have some increases with our firewalls. Their maintenance, you just never know whether it's going to go up, down, or sideways. You can't really tell. So this year, they did happen to go up on their annual maintenance.
Okay. So year-to-date, six months through the year, we're only at $1,540 for repairs and maintenance. we're, we're only at fifteen hundred and forty dollars for repairs and maintenance.
Right, we have, uh, yeah, we have some, uh, contracts coming up for our firewall. So, we'll renew those towards the end. A lot of these numbers, uh, may not reflect, you know, a lot of stuff happens in June. You know, May and June are just, you know, a real busy month for, you know, some of these contracts to renew.
So, so, um, let's see. Historically, we've been running pretty close to what was budgeted until FY twenty. And we budgeted fifty-eight hundred and we spent thirty-eight hundred.
Okay, what I, what item are we talking?
Uh, repairs and maintenance. Yep, yep. So, so that's the last full year of results that we have. So, my question is, if you could go back and look at, uh, what you think your actual be, actual will be for FY twenty-one?
Mm-hmm.
Um, because basically, we spent fifty-eight hundred dollars in FY twenty and we're proposing to spend sixty-nine hundred, which is a lot more than three percent, two years in a row, across the board.
Right.
So, if you could take a look at that, see if there's anything we could do to reduce that one.
Because I, I'm actu-, I'm actually seeing, well, see, I'm not looking at, obviously, the same thing you are. I'm looking at my Munis printout. And I have, uh, for the current budget, sixty-three, sixty-six. And department is a three percent increase based on the, uh, UPS increase. And that took us to sixty-nine, sixteen. So, let me see on here. Yeah, so there's, there is a, uh, the increase basically was a three percent, um, increase for, as a matter of fact, we're just, we have the fella coming on Monday to do our annual service. So, I think I just paid that. I'm pretty sure I just put that payment. But I will look at it. Yep.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, good.
No problem.
Um, the very next line item, uh, Internet Service.
Yep.
That, um, that's running at thirty percent. We've been pretty close year-to-year in what we budget and what we spend. So, I, I think that one's good. I'm just curious about why it actually went down.
It's a CEN. The CEN is based on, yeah, it's, it's based, it's kind of neat. It's based on how many, uh, communities and, and libraries and, you know, some of the other things that they, they host. Uh, how many, uh, participate? It can either go up or down, but notoriously, it's gone down. So, this time around, we actually, um, saw a decrease in what we pay.
Good.
Yep, so that was a, that was a nice thing to have happen. I like that.
So, then, so then the line just above that Regina, uh, telephone and fax that we were just talking about?
Yes.
That is running year-to-date, we're only at twenty-two percent of what we budgeted?
Yep.
Um, past years, we've run pretty close. Um, so I'm just curious about why, why we've only spent twenty-two percent? Because telephone and fax charges usually come monthly.
That's correct. Uh, but the, the part of that, that is not only telephone and fax, but within there is the, um, PRI, which is, uh,
Okay.
a, uh, you know, a one, a one-time fee for the year. Um, we also have, um, the support and maintenance for, uh, the PRI, which we actually pay, uh, a subcategory of that. And we haven't paid that one yet. That's an annual as well.
Got it. Okay.
I'll just, I'll just chime in as well. As of right now, it's at forty-four hundred. If I, I just pulled it up. So, as of today, it's at forty-four hundred.
Yep.
I think what probably happened with, with that is that, uh, a lot of phone bills came in, uh, at the beginning of January and didn't, or maybe even at the end of December, but didn't get paid till the first part of January.
Got it. Okay. Well, as I say, year-over-year, it's been very consistent what we budget and what, what was actual. We don't anticipate any reduction in charges unless we get rid of some of those fax lines, so.
Right.
It's good. Thank you.
The year-to-date column says twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so we're two months out from that.
Right.
Okay.
That's why I'm pulling it up here.
And we basically doubled that amount in two months.
Right. And I literally did just pay, uh, the to- total communications is our maintenance people for, uh, the PRI and all, and our, uh, phone system in general. So, I did just pay them. And that's about, uh, let's see, twenty-seven fifty-five. So, and I literally just paid that, so.
Can, can we use the, CEN for voice Regina?
Um...
Because if we could, and the que-, that's a question asked total, but if we could, we could get rid of a whole bunch of telephone lines. PRIs included.
Okay, um, I'm not sure that can happen, but I will check that one out. I will definitely.
Yeah, it's, it's worth asking. I wouldn't be surprised if there's a reason we can't because voice adds to the bandwidth for me, but still, it's worth looking into.
Sure, sure. And it, you know, it makes sense too.
Yeah.
You know, CEN has just blossomed in what they offer. It's amazing.
Yeah.
Totally amazing. And I am looking into some of the other things that they've just gotten into recently. Uh, and yeah, I've, I've got to look at that whole scenario because they just, they do a fantastic job.
Yeah, they do. I hear a lot of good things, so. Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions, counselors, so turn it over to you.
I, um, well, I have a similar question about the computer software line, but it's, um, I, I just opened up the Excel spreadsheet and it's... Uh, wait a minute, let me go back into, um, where's the... Oh, the comput-, sorry, the computer equipment line.
Okay.
Year-to-date looks like it's pretty low, but let me... Yeah, it's at seven eighty-six.
Yes. Um, I really, that one is, uh, the computer equipment line is really to replace some of the hardware. So, we basically haven't really done the six replacements yet.
Okay.
So, when we do the six replacements, that'll pretty much take up that.
Okay.
Uh, we have had some printers and, you know, things like that that we've had to replace. Uh, but it hasn't been a bad year. Um, I, I kind of attribute that to the, the pandemic because we were working at home and a lot of people had laptops, which our equipment was saved, you know, based on what they do, you know, in-house. So, uh, I think that's why you're seeing a, a difference in the, in the cost. Yep, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm all set though.
Okay, thank you Tom. Linda Mary, anyone?
If you have any, just, you know, shoot me an email and I'll certainly answer the question. Or if you have some good ideas, that helps too. So, especially with Bill, be, being in the, kind of in the field there, um, you know, you, you've got a lot of, uh, knowledge on that, so it really helps when I get that.
We're good to it.
Yep.
All right, thank you Regina.
Thank you. All right, stay safe everyone.
You too.
And get well with your foot there, jeez.
Thank you, working on it. Okay, now Finance.
Okay, um, this is quick. Uh, we have, so first of all, there used to be two assistant wa-, uh, wages lines and we have combined those into one. Uh, so that's why that looks so high. Uh, we have the fiscal assistant one and fiscal assistant two. Uh, so, we just combined that for the expediency sake.
Okay.
We have, the only changes really are, I lowered the operating expenses by just a bit. Um, the shredding, the townwide shredding is, I used to pay out of that line. It is now in the town clerk's budget because she does this, uh, collects the certifications and, and keeps them in, in her office. So, we decided she might as well just take care of that. Um, heating oil and propane, historically, the numbers indicate that we should reduce that by a bit. And the same with electricity. Uh, training dues, meetings and subscriptions, um, I increased a bit because of Munis training mostly. And, um, so overall, we're down by one percent, one point one.
Okay. Well, there go all my questions.
It's kind of weird to put together a whole budget with all the different departments and all the work that goes on it and then have a puny, you know, seven or eight lines myself. But, there you go.
Yeah. So, we actually put the, um, I take it back, never mind.
Oh, I, I wanted to point out, this is not specifically to my budget, but, um, to Tom and Andre, do you know that the, on the ClearGov? Ian, can you scroll down to the very bottom? Um, and that's where you find the, the narratives. So, if you have any questions, hopefully, they're answered in there.
Yeah, I saw that. I, I, once again, didn't get all the way there, um, but thank you for the reminder.
Yeah.
Um, Marcia, I, I think I do have a question. I think you touched on it, but now I've lost the thread. Um, um, operating expenses, what, what was the reason that went up this year? In the current year?
Um, oh, you mean the actual?
Yeah, the F twenty-one, year-to-date is...
I paid the ClearGov out of there. So, the way, the way we're doing ClearGov, um, there, Regina alluded to this earlier. There were setup fees. And because we didn't budget for it in the current year, um, I got them to agree to, uh, hold off on the setup fees until next year. And then they prorated the actual usage fee from the beginning of November so that we weren't paying all the way back to the beginning of July. And then, next year, we'll pay the setup fees.
Okay. Do you know what those are?
Uh, I can look it up and send it to you. I don't know offhand.
Okay.
Marcia?
Yes.
I'll, I'll say, a citizen, a member of one of the commissions used ClearGov, um, to check out something and she was very impressed. Thought it made it very easy to find, um, what she was looking for, the commission that she was looking for.
Right, and great to hear. That's our number one goal, to make this more, um, accessible to the taxpayers. Yeah, we hope to eventually get everything online that they could possibly need for, for making decisions about the budget. Thank you, Mary.
So, I have a question about the heating oil.
Yes.
So, you're, uh, you said based on history, it looks like it's time to reduce. Is that, that's usage? Does, um, you know, cost come in? Because it's on the rise, right?
Well, um, we have, first of all, most of our, most of our sites are now on propane or natural gas. Um, and heating oil, we only have the Lester House. So, we've clearly been saving money by having propane and natural gas. So, we, we didn't want to reduce before now because we didn't have enough history with those. Now that we have, uh, everything that can go on propane, on propane, we're seeing that the costs over the last four to five years when we've been doing those transfers over to propane have really saved the town money. So, it's, uh, I think we're safe in reducing it in twenty-two.
Very good, thank you.
That, and the Bill Library had a forty-year-old, uh, oil system that was just replaced, brand, brand-new, with a new propane system. So, that the efficiency gained from forty years newer should be huge. Wow.
And that's not even included yet.
Didn't they have that replaced? Was that just, like, was that two years ago now?
No, the, the library, they actually just did it about, uh, a month, month and a half ago. They, you might have seen them digging up there by the monuments, uh, the War Memorial. They had, uh, buried a propane tank because there were several, I think they had three old, uh, home heating oil tanks in the basement. So, they removed all of those and then they buried a propane tank and moved the whole heating system over to propane.
You, you're remembering correctly though, Andre. We've, we've talked about that system with Public Works for, it's been in their capital budget for quite a few years now.
Yeah, okay.
At least two or three.
Yeah, that's great news. Thank you.
Hey Marcia, can you explain to me the write-off expense?
Yes, that is something that we have in the, we don't budget for it, but if we have expenses that, um, by audit or, you know, at the end of the year when we're doing our, our review of all the expenditures, there are some that we just aren't going to recover, so we have to write them off. Um, I'll let, Ian, do you want to explain that further?
Uh, well, one, one example of that would be when we, um, every few years, Accounts Payable obviously collects outstanding checks. And we, eventually, what we do is we send that money to the state as unclaimed property. And so, that would, that's when I use that account as sending that money to the state. Um, it gets it, gets those, um, uncashed checks that are like years old. And then the, we send the information to the state. So, like, that's one example of how I would use that account.
How do you wind up with uncashed checks?
Somebody lost their check or it got lost in the mail.
Oh, okay.
Um, it's just like the outstanding checks. And eventually, over, you know, a period of two or three years, we get, you know, maybe twenty or thirty.
So, we write a check to someone and they don't cash it.
Correct.
After a certain period, a sundown period, if you will.
Yep.
Um, we just, we cancel it or write it off.
We write it off as unclaimed property. We send the information of who the person was that we paid it to and, um, I believe their address and the dollar amount. And, um, you can go onto the state website, the state has a website, and you can type your own name in to see if you've got any unclaimed property. Every state has one.
There was, there was just a big advertisement, uh, recently by the treasurer about the amount of money that they have uh, from people who own property, didn't know it, or, whatever. Yeah, a lot and all that.
So, it's showing as, it's showing as a negative, it's, so it's actually not, not revenue.
Revenue.
That's money coming back in. So, this is where you kind of get turned around.
See, I, I thought it was different. I thought it's unrecoverable money.
Uh, so, that negative dollar amount is a, uh, check that we received from somebody and it was an NSF.
So...
So, it got returned to us and, uh, the amount that we recovered, we were not able to recover those.
Insufficient funds, right. So, it's fun, monies or expenses that we can't legitimately recover.
Correct.
Okay. What else would fall under there, other than checks? Anything else?
I mean, it's really a grab-bag.
Right, I, I'm just looking for another example besides checks. Would that can, can, would that also take into account property?
Well, if we do property, um, or Ian, we could use the example of, um, funds that we close out. They don't necessarily come into the general fund, but, um, at some point, you, you, if... if, if a project is done, but there's money sitting there, either money or expenses sitting there and you just, you need to zero out that fund. You have to, you, so you would zero it out in the fund that that it shows up in, but then you have to have another side to the, the entry. So it may fall into a write-off expense line, not necessarily. We don't do it with the really big amounts, but the small amounts we do because you just have to have a place to put it.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once. Good job, Marcia.
Thank you.
So now, two o'clock, so we're slightly, yeah, we're four ahead. So now do we want to take a break and then resume when, when Liz comes in? Or is she already sitting in the room?
Nope, not sitting in the room.
If, if she's not, if, if you want, you can take like a five-minute break. I can call her and see if she can come in because she's going to do land use and land use and EDC.
Okay.
So then moving your schedule up if you want.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Break? Yes.
I hoped we'd have more people from the public as we always do.
Where are these contract collectors and censors? Don't they usually follow? Aren't they usually in finance? I mean, they're listed right after. But are they going to come?
They're listed on the schedule right after?
Or maybe they don't need to come.
No, they normally do show up though, Mary. You're right.
Yeah, but I was just getting Liz next. And I'm thinking, where's those two that usually fit right in there?
I don't even see them listed on the calendar I have from Roxanne.
They're not?
Usually they are listed as their own time slot, no?
Correct. But I'm saying they usually come right after Marcia. And before, Marcia, Regina, Adriana, they will come at the same time or, you know.
Yeah, they're not, they're not on the list today.
Unless maybe they don't need to come?
I was just talking to Adriana. She knows she's supposed, she is.
Maybe they're coming another day.
I just talked to Liz. She's actually on a Zoom meeting right now. She was a little surprised by the time, so she said she's going to wrap it up in fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Does anybody know if Ed coming for WPCA?
He's on the list.
At lunch?
Yes.
That, that's the very last one, right?
Yeah, I just hadn't talked to him.
I can, I can text him, Ian.
Okay. I was just going to say if Ed isn't coming to do that and Bill, if you were going to present maybe, or I mean, we could, you and I could throw in WPCA while we're waiting.
Yeah. Sure, we can do that.
I just don't want Ed to show up and we have already done it.
So I'm, I'm just going to let him know we may be running a little ahead of schedule, so.
I don't know, Public Works is in there. That can take a while.
Yeah, maybe I shouldn't mention anything about being ahead of schedule.
A lot of line items in that budget, yeah.
Yeah.
Is the password posted somewhere?
Right behind you.
On the board there. What kind of Toyota do you drive?
I bought a Tundra last weekend.
Oh, you did?
I finally did it after four years of talking about it, five years of talking about it.
Tundra, huh? Wow.
Finally did it.
That's a big old truck. Did you get the full quad cab or?
Uh, I got a two thousand fourteen crew cab.
Those are nice trucks.
TRD off-road.
Oh.
Yeah, the suspension on it's upgraded.
Is it a V-eight or a V-six?
Five point seven liter V-eight.
Wow.
It's a big boy.
Drink some gas, I bet.
Thirteen miles with a gallon. That's why I kept my Civic.
Is that your commuter car?
I mean, I'm enjoying the truck right now, but once the, you know.
The winter's over, yeah.
Once it, once the fun of it as a new vehicle gets over, I'm probably going to bounce back to the Civic. It's just not economical for me to drive that every day. Not that I drive a lot, but.
Do you go away in the country where you would use something like that?
During the summer, I, I've been going with my friend who has a Jeep to get the beach pass over in Rhode Island to go fishing.
Oh, okay.
And they're actually as specific as you cannot have an all-wheel-drive vehicle. It must be a four-wheel-drive vehicle.
Could you drive it onto the beach?
Yes. So next year, I'll probably be getting the beach pass. That's quite an expensive ordeal. Not along with the two hundred dollar permit you have to pay for, there's like fifteen items you have to have in your vehicle at all times while you're on the beach. And it's like over.
Flare gun.
Well, fire extinguisher, tow line, it's about like eight hundred dollars.
First aid kit, yeah.
Yeah, whatever the thing, it's about eight hundred dollars worth of stuff you have to buy. And it's, if you get caught on the beach, it's a hundred dollars per item that you don't have for a ticket.
Just for fishing?
Yes.
But you're, so essentially you might have to drive out on like a jetty or something. And you may not be able to get back if you don't have.
Some of those beaches are like, I go to a beach, it's like three or four miles from end to end.
Sure.
They want to make sure that if you do get caught out there, you're going to be able to sustain yourself for a while, if not make the repair there. Like a spare tire is probably one of the things on the list.
Yes, and the tow line because a lot of people get stuck and they want you to be able to help people. A police officer that was out there this summer was telling me this horror story, this guy that got stuck and just kind of kept on spinning his tires and whole engine blew up and set on fire. The whole truck.
Overheated it, yeah.
Yeah, the whole truck basically was just.
Because what happens is it sinks down into the sand, the engine doesn't get enough air around it and it just heats up and heats up and heats up. Well, if you're dumb enough to keep just, you know.
I want to go with you, Ian. It sounds like a big investment.
Yeah, I've been going with my buddy though, and once you get the taste of how fun it is.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I did it on the Cape. I didn't have, I paid for a permit. That was it.
Oh, you didn't need any fire extinguisher or anything like that?
Nothing. You pay for a permit, you go.
Rhode Island requires you, it's fifteen items, I believe.
Wow. So you're going to have, you're going to put rocket launchers on the grill?
No, it doesn't, it's, it's not going to be that crazy, but it's like an air deflator for your tires to air down. And then, you know, a, a compressor of some sort to reinflate your tires is required. I know a fire extinguisher, a tow line. Just a, just a few of them.
Like a good idea to have a buddy with you too.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that's probably a good idea.
It's nice to go with somebody else who has a four-wheel-drive vehicle too, so if you get stuck.
You don't have to ask them.
They'll get you.
Yeah, I've, I had a phone, I used to have a Jeep, you know, big CJ seven, and I got a phone call at five-thirty in the morning from this guy I was on a boat with. He calls me, hey, you got a Jeep, right? I said, yeah. Do you have a wench? I said, yeah. He goes, we're stuck out here in the dunes off ninety-five in Rhode Island.
Sounds like what my brother did to my family.
And I said, well, first of all, what do you do? It's five-thirty in the morning. Well, we just got out here and I got stuck. I need, I need somebody to pull me out. And I was like, all right, I'll be out in twenty minutes.
Yeah, my brother went out the other night to watch the sunset and he got stuck and he had to call our buddy with the Jeep with to go get him. They were out there till midnight digging my brother's Jeep out.
My neighbor has a, a two thousand twenty Tacoma off-road. It has a button that if you get stuck in the mud, it has a button. You just push the button and it gets you out.
Wow.
It's apparently smarter than a person rocking their way out.
That's, that's the kind of technology I want.
I, I bought these plastic tracks that are about, you know, three feet long and they're ribbed on the bottom and the top and basically wedge them underneath. Wedge them underneath the tire to, for the tires to grab on to.
And that's good in the snow too.
Yep.
Is there any kind of a weather report though, if there's, if it's not great for cars on sand? Do you want to go? You know, like, are tires too thin? Do you know, are the tires, is there some kind of a weather report?
Um, what happens typically is the, when the season starts, when you can drive on up on the top, there's basically, what happens is there's a road formed from so many people driving up and down the same path. Um, so it becomes pretty sturdy up on the.
Sorry, I set up when I was quick, loom doctor appointment for Sue.
Oh, you don't have to be.
Because I wasn't supposed to be here. Is everyone gone again? No, everybody else is online.
Everybody's online.
Oh, hi, everyone. Hi, Mary. How you doing? Tom? Andrea? So I didn't bring anything with me, so, but I'm, because the mayor said he wanted to see me as soon as possible. Oh, he didn't have to rush you like that, but. So, yeah, so I know that at two forty-five, I had EDC and at three, I had land use department. So if you want to bring EDC up first, that would be the first one that I'm scheduled for.
Your wish is my command.
Wow, this is really neat.
Yeah, isn't it?
Yeah. So we're going to be doing a ZBA meeting the same way. Um, next, next, next Wednesday night.
I think it's all here, yes, there.
Yep, so EDC.
Wow.
Oh, it's all under land use? Oh, it is all under, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
For on clear gov.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So EDC, we have operating expenses, twenty-eight hundred, and we have dues and fees. So the operating expenses, what happened, it used to be only eight hundred dollars, but we serve a huge bill that we paid to CERC. And last year, what the, the budget was revised, that we added an additional two thousand dollars to the operating budget so they could have a booth at the farmer's market so that they could do the youth booth, support the youth. at the farmer's market so that they could do the youth booth, uh, support the youth. And, uh, so the mayor added, I'm sorry, so I had back surgery about a month ago and I have this dumb thing on my back that is heat. It is starting five mornings. Okay, disregard that, whoever's online. Um, so. I'm fine, um, so what happened last, what happened last year was the mayor said, uh, we eliminated a big bill. It was around $15,000 to CERC, um, and, um, not CERC, um, I can't recall which is, I don't know if the mayor's online. And he added, he added $2,000 to the budget, so we have $2,800. It's the same as last year, it's no change. And the dues and fees, uh, $1,150 are for Advanced CT.
Advanced CT used to be?
CERC.
Okay.
Connecticut Econo- Econo-, yeah, CERC.
Okay.
Resource.
And so what do we get for that fee? What do they provide for us?
Well, we get, um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Liz, you're there, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So one of the reasons why we changed from CERC to SECTOR was CERC was charging us almost $6,000 a year. And then they were pushing information that was provided by CERC, which is now Advanced CT, to us. So we said, "All right," I took it to EDC and said, you know, "None of you guys are going to the SECTOR meetings, nobody is." We brought them in to see if there was anything that, uh, that they could garner for value. EDC didn't seem to. So what we ended up doing was reducing it, going with, uh, Advanced CT in place of SECTOR. And then Advanced CT, prior to the pandemic, we had scheduled a, a very big, uh, meeting for them which was going to be the people from, uh, Advanced CT were gonna come down and basically plot a course for EDC in terms of what economic development should look like in the town of Ledger. And, uh, they were going to do all sorts of detailed analysis of housing and all sorts of things, just to name a few. And that's still gonna happen as soon as this breaks free, but they provide a lot of that. They also provide, uh, marketing opportunities for when, uh, businesses are looking to locate in Connecticut and specifically Eastern Connecticut. They will push those leads to us either via email or phone calls.
Okay, great.
And, and actually last year, we actually were able to, um, uh, have a meeting with a business that may or may not want to relocate to a property in Ledger, so, um, you know, the project Aqua, Fred. So I mean, it, it actually, they are, they actively look for towns that have a building that matches their businesses' wants and needs and then they sit down with you and have a meeting and ask you to give them a tax incentive program or something like that. So that, that's actually something that came to fruition. We don't have an answer on that yet, but it's something that, um, the mayor and I worked on with Advanced CT with relocating a large business here, so I think it's definitely worth the dues and fees.
Okay, something in the paper this morning about some company is, is looking to relocate. Uh, they sound like they're in the data, data business.
Oh, I heard that on the news too.
Yes, and I was thinking we, on Route 12, back in the day, there was a company, and I think they went out of business, Data Company or other? I don't know, Fred, if you remember?
Oh, yeah, that was DataCon. Um, that is, that's a lot different than, they're, they're referring to hyperscale data centers. Um, and those are. Those are, yeah, those are, those are basically cloud storage for Amazon, the insurance companies, uh, really, really big companies that, uh, invest $200 to $300 million per structure. And so we are, um, they actually are working on a floating zone for that over off of Route 2 because the infrastructure is present there to, uh, be able to do that.
Yeah, just, just as an update, Fred, the Planning and Zoning Commission, we actually passed a, uh, floating zone regulation for that.
Oh, perfect.
It's actually, it's actually in place. We have a Technology Park District floating zone now as part of our zoning regulation, so. So a floating zone is where you apply for a certain property to be anywhere in Ledger as long as it meets a certain criteria like maybe 50 acres or whatever it is. And you apply to change the zone of that property to this Technology Park District. Once it's approved, at, as part of that approval, you give the Planning and Zoning Commission a master plan. So I'm gonna do these 18 data centers, okay? And so they approve the master plan and they approve the zone for that property and the zone is now floated over that property. So any underlying use that used to be allowed on that, in that zone, goes away. So the only use of that property is now Technology Park District. And then as they start to develop the property, they come in in phases for actual site plan approval for the building. So we, um, Bill Sweeney, on behalf of some gentlemen that were interested in data centers, came to the commission last year. He worked with me and we put a regulation together and it was approved last spring through the Planning and Zoning Commission. So anybody could come and get a huge piece of property and they could apply to have that overlay put on it in Ledger and then they could come in for site plan approval, um, for each individual data center building. We learned a lot about these data centers or, Tom, it sounds like you knew a little bit about them, they're.
Well, just what I heard on Lee Elsie this morning.
Yeah, they're huge. I mean, one of the things is they're, they come in these huge cement, sort of precast cement. I mean, they have to be super thick, they have to have, um, they have their own power generator plants because they can't ever.
Be relying on a grid, right?
Right, and Fred, you may know even more about it, but that's, we've already put that zone in place. So if somebody wanted to come to Ledger and put a data center, we already have a mechanism in place for them to do that. We did that last year.
And if the property were to transfer, does the zone essentially, does the zone stay with the property or does it automatically expire?
No, it would, the use stays with the property unless the use stops. If the use stops, it could be reverted back to, um, the, the original zone. We, we haven't laid out, I, I don't have it in front of me and we haven't used it yet, so, but it's all laid out, the steps in our zoning regulations.
So if it was previously zoned for farming, let's just say.
Let's say it was a residential zone, it's R60. You could apply to come in on this 100 acres and float this Technology Park District on the 100 acres. You would come in with a master plan showing your different, you know, phases of development, the different buildings and what you're gonna do. The Planning and Zoning Commission has a lot of discretion. We don't like that building, we want that building there at master plan level. And then once it's approved, as they start to build these buildings, they go to the PCC just for individual site plan approval. So the public hearing portion is over during the application. Change that property from R60 to Technology Park District.
Interesting, so it would have to be a large enough parcel?
Yes, yes, there's definitely a minimum lot acreage. I can't recall off the top of my head what it is. But it's, yeah, you have to, yeah, you have to have a, um, we also had, it has to be along a major route like Route 12 or Route 2. Um, it has to have accessibility to, you know, fiber optics and utilities and all that stuff, so.
Property hanging around?
We actually have one, um, at Route 2, the one that the mayor was referencing, um, that is owned by, uh, a company where they originally hired attorney Sweeney to work with us to put this regulation together. It's out by the, um, past Sixtina. Part of it's in Preston, part of it's in Ledger. The access is from Preston, there's also a Ledger access, so that was one piece of property that we knew of that someone wanted to do that. But there's been no application yet to actually start the project.
Preston actually privatized, private made the road that leads to it private, they.
They did, they abandoned the road. Yeah, there was a whole thing.
Why would they do that?
So they don't have to keep it up.
It, it's, no, it's a whole thing and it's, it's a, I can, yeah, so what happened was you had to enter through a road that Pa- Preston had, but Preston, uh, the, the developer wanted to own it as a driveway, so Preston abandoned the road and sold the property. And so if this Technology Park was built, um, the developer would have to develop a driveway up to it and the town would not have to maintain it, but in, that, in that being said, we wouldn't have to maintain any portion of the road on our part too.
They were talking about driving very large trucks up and down that road too, basically beating the road up. So it was within the town, that Preston's favor.
Just to bring that type of.
Yeah, I mean, there's a whole lot of complications with that project, there's so many. I mean, I, I could sit here for an hour with you and go through the, all the issues. There was a bridge, there was a lot of things. But the abandoning of that road by Preston and Ledger, um, which you guys actually approved last year or the year, the end of the year before that, um, really took away any, um, town liabilities for the entrance to that site. So.
So we are no longer members of SECTOR.
Right.
We're using Advanced CT.
Right. And so as a, uh, you know, last year, this was the budget for EDC as well. It was because they started doing like the Young Entrepreneur Booth at the farmer's market. Um, they also last year, out of that budget, did a, uh, like, um, Fred?
Yes, yes, I am.
What, what was the one that Megan did, the, uh, the Pride, the Contax?
That was, uh, that was the, uh, Supporting Eating at Ledger Restaurants.
Local, right.
It was, they, they bought gift certificates to Ledger restaurants and people would enter. So that was one of their expenses last year.
Yeah, and they gave away, uh, you would enter when you went to a Ledger restaurant, especially with the COVID last year. That was sort of a way to drum up businesses, uh, business to keep the restaurants going. And, um, they would, uh, you could enter your name in a drawing if you went to this restaurant and then once a week, you would pick it and you would get a gift certificate to one, some Ledger restaurant. So they've been doing things like that, um, and so that's where we are. It's no change from last year.
The Young Entrepreneurs Booth, so is this a booth that's essentially funded by EDC and then what, we invite local young people to, like, host the booth that week?
Yes.
With their goods or wear or whatever?
Correct.
Okay, and they don't have to go through the rigmarole? Like if they were to sell brownies, they don't have to go through?
Right, so the EDC sets up the booth and they have their own little pop-up tent and a table and they go there and a parent has to be with the, with the minor. And they go there and they set them up and they get them going and then they leave. And then the, the child or, I don't know if they, have you been there to see if they're there the whole time, Fred?
Um, the parents, I believe, are, and Linda might know.
The parents are, but I know the EDC gets them started and then they leave and then they come back and help them to break down?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, obviously my preference is they stay and maybe talk business with these young entrepreneurs, but the EDC chairman has instead set it up as show up, set up, leave, and then come back to break down afterwards.
I would concur with Fred's, um, description of that. And also, I don't believe we did it last year. Um, it was two years ago. Last year we were under COVID and we did not, uh, we did not do it.
Okay.
But we expect to revive that this year?
But I, that's the hope and they did have some discussion, uh, at a meeting a couple meetings ago about it.
It's a great idea.
It's a really good idea. I think it might have been, uh, the brainstorm of Linda Davis and Jamie Allen, actually. Am I correct, Linda? You guys, that was your original idea?
I would give Jamie, uh, 80% and I'll, I'll, no, I'll give her 90%, I'll take 10%. I, I went to the meeting and kept her from, uh, jumping off the ledge when they talked so negatively about it.
I, I know, I know, it was, it was a difficult meeting, I agree with you, Linda. So that's all we have for EDC.
So Liz, uh, this is Bill, questions about, um, the, um, operating expenses, small line items, but they doubled. Uh, one for, uh, in the wetlands and the other was for ZBA. We had $500.
Okay, so the wetlands, the reason the line items doubled and they actually asked for it last year too, um, was they want to update their wetlands map.
Okay.
So they wanted some funding to update the wetlands map. Now, the, we have two wetlands maps in, in Ledger. We have the DEEP, um, their layer, um, their map layer for the GIS. But then we have an official wetlands map, and I'm giving quotes here. Um, it's one that Bill Haas did and actually sort of like, uh, drew out by hand and then it was overlaid, um, onto our system. And what it is, is as new subdivisions come in and wetlands are actually flagged on properties, they want that map to be updated with the newest maps. So that is what they're looking for funding for.
Got it.
I know they asked for it last year and they did not get it last year, but it looks like they're yet again out. I know it's, I know for a fact that's what it's for. They want to do, uh, update the official inland wetlands map for Ledger.
Okay. All right.
The zoning board of appeal.
Yeah, ZBA, what's that one?
Honestly, I, I don't know. I can find out, um, and let you guys know on that one. I, to be honest with you, let me just see, what does it say?
I'm gonna pull up the narrative, see if we can find something in there.
I thought that one was exactly the same, so forgive me.
Well, there's the narrative.
Should be in the lower left here.
What do you mean?
The lower left of your screen. It pops up as a PDF that you then have to open.
Yeah, I have it open.
Is it the last line?
I just don't know which, I don't know which account it is.
I can't see it.
Oh, so the account number, um, 10114.
Department, not the ZBA. We need, uh, DBA.
Oh, right, right, right.
Page down on that, you might be on the same page.
I don't think so.
So the, the, here, this one.
Yeah, I know that, well, that, that, the detachment is whatever it is, that's the only attachment.
Okay, well, honestly, I didn't know that it doubled, so I will, um, get information to you right away.
Okay, thank you.
And actually I asked Deb and she told me nothing had changed, so I apologize and maybe it was entered incorrectly. Other than that, I know planning and zoning didn't change and, uh, the Land Use Department, um, budget, we have no increase in that. We kept it exactly the same as last year. But IWC for sure, they, they're looking for a little extra.
The, um, operating expenses for the department, um, year-to-date, so, uh, we reduced it last year. F20, we budgeted $7,500. Previous years it was around $5,000. F21, we budgeted $6,000 and we've only spent 16% of that. So do you know what goes into operating expenses?
Except that, um, I'll be spending quite a bit of it on GIS this year.
Right, okay, yep.
And, yeah, we're only in, we're in March, but we have GIS, we have a bunch of cert applications coming up, um, um, so we have dues and fees that don't come up until the second half of the fiscal year. I'm gonna make a quick phone call and find out from Deb what the DBA issue was.
Okay.
And for some reason, my remote access to my computer just got booted.
Hey, Deb, um, I'm looking at the budget for Zoning Board of Appeal and they're asking for double. Do you know why? They want double? Yeah. I thought it was exactly the same. Well, it was 500, they asked for 1,000, but there's. Okay.
I think we cut it last year.
Okay, you got it. Okay, so a mom's friend, she said it was a goofy meeting, that's Deb's, that's the DBA. She said, "Their feeling was if we put in a thousand, they'll cut it to 500 and we'll get what we got last year."
That's a strategy.
Uh, okay, so I'm being honest here, that's exactly what she just said. I was not at that meeting. But I can tell you that we, every two years, we have a training class and the ZBA members are involved and that class is in March. So we just dropped a bunch of money for, for training for staff members. That, actually it's tomorrow, it's Sa- I mean Saturday, we have an all-day seminar. Um, so honestly, I think $500 is sufficient. I'm gonna, as a department head, I'm letting you know that. I, I don't think there's any need for 1,000 because we're not gonna have that training in FY '21, '22. The training is FY 2021. The train is every two years. We try to keep that money every two years because we know we're gonna have to put it out for Planning and Zoning Wetlands and Zoning Board of Appeals members, but that's in this year's budget.
Okay. Okay.
And I, and I can tell you, Bill, too, that I cut our operating expenses, I think, by at least twenty-five hundred dollars last year because I reduced the amount of the GIS that was normally in there. And then if you also notice, last year was the first year that I combined, we used to have here zoning, building, and land use. And now we're one, one budget.
Yeah, right. Did notice that.
Right. And I actually did last year cut twenty-five hundred off of it and I'm maintaining that same amount this year.
Yeah, see that. And I think our GIS update is long overdue.
It is, and I, and I'm getting there.
Good, good. So happy to see that finally coming back.
Yes.
So who actually? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Linda.
I was gonna say, so I'm confused. So who actually puts together this budget?
I do. I put, so I put together the department budget, okay?
Okay.
Deb Dobson, she's our Commission Administrative Assistant. She did the ZBA, the Planning and Zoning, and the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission. And I've discussed it with her when she did it. So those are, they're the ones. EDC, to be honest with you, I'm not sure who did that one. Marsha, did you do that one? I think Marsha or the mayor's office did.
I'm just a scribe.
Then I think probably Mary Beth might have done that one.
I think Mary Beth may have done that one too.
Yeah.
And to point out, Deb doesn't create the budgets. They, those commissions decide what they want.
Right.
Yeah. And then she puts it in the munis.
Right. So what happens is before the end of the year, we have, in our annual meetings, we have a proposed budget. And so they review what we had last year and what they would like us to put forth this year. So all of those commissions, all those amounts have been through those boards and commissions.
Okay, good question. Thank you, Linda. So, so GIS, Liz, will that update correct the lines that are not exactly accurate throughout town?
Yeah. So what happened was I had come to the town council for a bid waiver because we thought we had a bid waiver for People GIS, which there is a standing bid waiver for them. And so People GIS, who used to actually, you sent them a copy of the map. They would change the lines a few years back, said, we're not doing that anymore. So they gave us the name of a consultant. So we thought that that was working for them. So I had spent like six months working with a consultant, giving him all sorts of maps. And he gave us a price that was a little high. And, and so I went to for a bid waiver and he asked me to get two others. Now, I have two others. I'm just, I actually am getting there. I have to get now them, them all of the maps. And they're going to give me prices. And there's a couple that actually sound really good that I'm sort of interested in going with. So that's where we are. So in other words, People GIS, when they first pitched, gave us Ledgerd that pitched to use them, that was part of their service, was if you got a subdivision, you would send them the map and they would take care of updating the line. Now they're saying, okay, now we're not doing that anymore. So you have to go to a consultant, hire a consultant to do that, and then send us the information. So that's where we are.
Yeah, okay. So, so I may be talking about something slightly different. I remember Mike Cherry saying way back that if you get further, either from one of the boundaries, one of the borders of the town or the center of the town, the map doesn't overlay perfectly. And I've been several places in town where if you look at a GPS and you look at the property line and you're standing on the property line, it shows the property line somewhere else. And I know that can happen with GPS anyway, but it, it seems to happen a lot in Ledgerd. And I, I'm kind of tying the two together in my own head. So I'm not talking about new developments. I'm talking about existing property lines from way back.
Right. And you know what? Yeah. So, you know, when you think about the GIS, the GIS is a guide. It's a tool. It's not a survey.
Right, right.
It's a tool. Now, I have to say, this one, I've seen some towns where the GIS is so bad and so off where the roadway is going through that, you know, the property line is showing through the middle of the roadway. Ours is pretty good. I mean, so you, I hate to say this in a bad way because it's a wicked good guide for us, okay? But think of it as a pretty cartoon because there's nothing on the GIS that you can say, hey, your house is five feet from the property line. Even if it was really, really accurate, it's just a geographical information systems tool. It's not a survey map. So we use it with like wetlands. So we put the wetlands overlay on. That's a tool for us. But if you're gonna come in with an application, you still have to go and have the wetlands, a wetland site just flag them and have a land surveyor locate the flags.
Right.
But it's a guide for us. And what happens is when you get these new subdivision maps and they actually show where the new wetlands are. So if we can get those to People GIS, they put them now on the GIS. Now we have more of a guide. So as we get these actual official maps and we overlay them into the GIS, it gives us a little bit more information. I don't know if there's anything to do to fix those property lines. I, I've, no one's ever actually told me that before, Bill. We're having enough problems right now getting People GIS to put the two thousand nineteen aerial on that's been available for a year. So they, apparently they're having difficulty. The mayor and I are not sure what the problem is because we've sent them, I sent them the link directly from the Regional Planning Agency. So, so there is some frustration on my part with People GIS. But apparently that's the system the town has chosen to work with a number of departments. The Building Department, the Town Clerk's Department. So I don't really have any choice but to work with them.
Yeah. No, I, I just wanna understand how, how expect, I, I just wanna set expectations of what's gonna get better, what's not. So that's, that's a really good explanation.
Yeah. What's gonna get better is the more recent information that's actually on file on the town clerk will get put on there. Whether or not the accuracy of boundary lines will get better, that's, you know, anybody's guess.
Yeah, got it. Okay. All right. Thank you. I don't have any other questions. Calvin?
I'm all set, Bill.
I was just, I was gonna just add about the wetlands. I went in to apply for a, to do a shed. And they looked at the wetlands map and said, yep, this doesn't look bad. And then suddenly they come up with this hand-drawn map that they use. And I have to admit, I'm still, that was two years ago and I'm still angry about it. That we're using a hand-drawn map and they say, well, you'll have to go have it flagged. I'm not having a five hundred dollar shed flagged by wetlands people. So I don't understand why we're using somebody's hand-drawn map from fifteen years ago. It's gotta be fifteen years ago.
Agreed. And, and I know that was more than two years ago because I've been here for almost three and it wasn't during my tenure or anyone that's here now. I can guess who it was that had you do that, but. We don't, we don't, we don't typically go out and have people flag wetlands for sheds.
I'm on inland wetlands in Preston. We wouldn't do that.
So I'm, I'm just throwing that out there. And I apologize if that happened to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you very much, Liz.
Okay. And if anyone has any questions, again, we, we now have the mystery of the zoning board of appeals. So, um, yeah, so we're all set there. I don't need to get back to you on anything, all right?
No, you don't. Nope, we're all set. Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
Do the attorney fees show up somewhere else?
Yep. Uh, Mary Beth does it within the first level. Yeah. So when, when we get attorney fees, attorney fees for our land use lawyers are sent up to the mayor's office and they're paid through whatever account they pay them for.
And I'm gonna say, doesn't it matter the fact that Fred is currently getting it? His GP's no longer in the meeting.
No, I, I know for a fact that all attorney bills, so when Carl Landelina, who's our land use lawyer, um, every year he says, okay, I think you just sent us a small rate increase. It wasn't a lot. He sent it to the mayor's office and he copied me. So all of land uses, legal bills go to the mayor's office for payment.
We thought, we decided to consolidate that at some point because they, they had so few. Dollar-wise, it didn't make sense to just have a separate line anymore. But we can, anytime somebody wants, we can print out by vendor, if you wanna see the land use only bills.
And, and we try, we try not to use them if we don't have to, you know, you know, because we know every, every minute costs us money when we're on the phone with them. We try to keep things short. We try to keep things sweet. We try to do it by email. Right. So we're, we're very cognizant of attorney fees and don't call them unless we absolutely have to. Okay?
We're, we're at thirty-nine percent for year-to-date. We're thirty-nine percent for legal services and nine percent for town attorney bills.
Well, that's great. That means we're doing something right.
Yep.
That's what we want. We wanna have nice, low attorney fees.
Yep.
That's the goal. All right, everybody. Thank you. Take care.
So Ethan, Ed replied. He said he's gonna zoom in and he was planning for four-thirty. But he, he didn't say he could do early, but I can ask him if you want.
Well, Steve is in his office, so we can do public works. I just watched him walk in.
Yeah, let's do public works because we, we don't know how long that's gonna go.
All right, let me go grab Steve, make sure he's available.
Okay.
So last year, I said, next year, we have to remember that this schedule is just not good. We always end up with time, too much time in between and we're scrambling to find people all over the building. And of course, I forgot. So can somebody younger than me remember that for next year?
That would be Andra.
I'll put a reminder in my phone now.
Would you please do that? We have this problem every year.
But you know what, Linda? We always get out early. It doesn't run all the way to five, so we get out early.
Well, this is good. This is good.
Yeah.
That our schedule is too generous as time flies.
In between, can we speak to certain items?
I don't see why not.
Can we what? Get to certain items?
Can I speak to a specific item?
Sure.
Okay. So I put a big asterisk in my notebook under fax, question mark, question mark. We need to fix that right away. As far as still having fax lines.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. Yeah, I, everybody, everybody in the world is on e-fax nowadays.
Or, or something similar. I, I did, I was searching and there are government HIPAA, um, you know, with HIPAA concerns and that kind of thing. It's covered. There's municipal fax, e-fax type things. So we need to get that done sooner rather than later.
I agree. So how do we do that? Who's gonna follow up with, with Regina?
I can tell you that the mayor has been pushing that for the last two years. And it's frustrating that it's not getting done. So it, it is being addressed on a monthly basis, I would say.
Okay. So I'll jump on board then, Marsha. How's that?
Okay, good.
All right. Making myself a reminder.
Okay, is this some kind of a fax that nobody can see or is this secret or?
No. So the chief complaint of most people who don't wanna put personal, like PII, personal information, uh, on the internet because it could be hacked.
Sure.
So they say, well, like I do this all the time, somebody will have to fax me over an application for security to get on the base.
Sure.
It has your social, it has important information on there. Um, they are very hesitant to send it on the internet unencrypted. So if I don't have their encryption program, I can't unencrypt it. So what they wanna do is fax it. So we have a mechanism at EV where there's a number. It actually goes to a printer, you know, but I have to put in my security code to access that file. But it's my code. It's not somebody else's. And it prints out and then I just take it down and, and it's like a fax. But it's a professional fax, the e-fax. That's what they're talking about.
So if, if you said if you need a form, this is, this is, would not be a blank form. This has information on it?
Yeah, yeah, like someone's personal information. Or maybe some sensitive company information or government information, financial information. A lot of people are still only comfortable with the old fax.
Okay.
And they don't have a lot of faith in, you know, encrypted faxes on the internet.
And the funny thing is, they don't realize that, that their, their faxes most often going to an electronic system. But it's a picture. It's not data. So it's more secure.
Somebody tell us?
Go ahead, Bill.
So, so you can have e-fax send faxes to your email inbox via Outlook if it's not secure. You can go to a website. You can log in with your ID and see the faxes that are yours. I mean, there are all kinds of ways to do it. And none of it involves an analog line or paper unless you choose to print it. And it's a lot more secure because if you send a fax to a fax machine sitting in somebody's office, who knows who gets to see that? Yeah. So it's actually, in my opinion, it's a lot more secure than, than what we're doing now.
Yep.
Could we, this might be a little heavy-handed, but could we cut that line item now to force the issue?
It might cost more to set it up.
Okay.
So we, we might have to make an investment to get rid of those lines. That's usually what happens when you convert to something like this.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Marsha, are you seeing this? There's no line items under public works. Steve's excited about that. He's got no department, he says.
Tom and I have it. It's on paper.
Tom, mine's the blue one right there. So after the white car, the white Volkswagen.
There, it's fixed.
Yeah, I see it.
Hit refresh, Ian.
Jackpot. Thank you.
Jackpot, that sounds better.
Oh, your salary's back, Steve.
Oh, yeah, and the line item salary can't get paid.
Tough crowd, Steve.
Yeah.
Used to, huh?
I've had tougher. Been around twenty-seven plus years. The early days were.
So how do you wanna go, Steve? Do you want us to go with questions? Do you wanna say a few things, walk through it? How do you wanna do it?
Uh, well, I do have a little bit of a narrative. I don't think there's anything. I, I don't think the mayor, I mean, my budget was left mostly intact as far as I could see. So, um, there was only one cut that I would disqualify. Well, so far, just relative to this year's budget, I have two ways of projecting forward and they're both coming in at around a ninety thousand dollar surplus for this year. And that even accommodates winter weather continuing at an average rate that we've had this year. And it looks like if we went to, from feast to famine, hopefully. So it looks like it may have shut off and, and so that, that will come in maybe in much better shape. Roads, the budget is basically funded or proposed at the total value, depending on grant approval, of course, and receipt from the state. Uh, near the roughly a million dollars a year we need to keep our roads at, the, the present average road surface rating. So I think that's favorable. Facilities, the, we still have a somewhat of a backlog, but we've chipped away considerably at that. for repairs that not only are still needed, but of course, will be emerging along the way with deterioration, and there had been two funds covering capital needs, there was one that was kind of an emergent catch-up fund, and then there was a long-term reserve, and the decision was made to re-retire the former one and combine them now into a single reserve, which makes sense at this stage, so that, any res, any residual funding left in the capital needs account will be, uh, transferred into this re, uh, reserve account that is gonna, is proposed to receive an additional hundred thousand, which, uh, together is not enough to cover everything we presently have need to do, but if it continues to be funded in that fashion, we'll catch up and keep up over the next several years. Uh, the equipment capital funds were, mayor proposed what I recommended, and that should keep us on track. We, I'll just only make some comments about waste management generally, this year, you, there will be no, there's no pressure coming from changes at SCARA on the towns to absorb additional costs, but, and that's because SCARA has a substantial residual reserve, cash reserve, for the many lucrative years of their power purchase agreement over at the Preston incinerator, the, but we have now, as a authority, abandoned, that is a destination for our tra- trash, the SCARA trash is now going to Wheel Abraider in Lisbon, and that contract with Preston, with Refuel, or, um, yeah, has expired over there, there's some lingering attachments to the property, because SCARA, I think, owns property there, as part, so, we actually own property, and now we've left that particular site behind for more favorable rates of disposal at Wheel Abraider, but there's no longer a power purchase agreement, or that dimension of the original contract is expired as well, and SCARA does not make money on power anymore, and so the only money they make is on reimbursement of tipping fees charged to the towns, and a limited amount, uh, for the brush grinding that they provide, re, extra time is available, is farmed out to towns outside the authority, and we make some money there, but it's not nearly enough to keep up with the expenses as they have snowballed over the years, so my point is, is that, and recycling no longer is something that brings member towns a minimum income, that has flipped, and we've gone back to paying, I think it's around seventy dollars a ton, as opposed to receiving a minimum of five dollars a ton, but, and that plays into this, SCARA has, is absorbing that entire cost to member towns right now, that's not gonna continue forever, and neither will the tipping fee subsidy continue, the prac, the, the actual, um, tipping fee that SCARA pays per ton for operations, overhead, and actual charges from the destination site is over ninety dollars a ton, member towns are only charged fifty-eight, so there's a pretty substantial subsidy, obviously, there, so between that subsidy and the increased cost for the recycling, and then other incidental costs, the town is not going to be able to, I mean, the SCARA is not gonna be able to continue to do that, and they're gonna slowly, they're working on a, a ra, a change, a plan that's gonna be presented to the towns this year later on, where there's gonna be a gradual shifting or return to the towns of some of these charges, which means, starting next year, our tipping fee line item, and maybe, which would include, of course, primarily trash, but also recycling, is gonna have to be funded at a higher level, and then it'll be that way progressively for many years out, until there's a steady state, where hopefully, as we go forward and do it gradually, SCARA will, will not bleed away the entire reserve that they have in getting to this point, and they will still, that, that will go out hopefully many, many years, but the changes are coming.
Yep.
Steve?
Yes?
Is, uh, so everybody that used to go to, to Preston is now going to Lisbon?
If they're a member of SCARA, yes.
So, is any, any towns using that facility in Preston?
I don't know if they are, it's on the spot market or through a private contract directly with them, I, I don't know where they are getting their trash now, they're still running, but, and there are other places around the state that are hurting, because facilities are shutting down, so, you know, everyone, there's a, been a shuffling of the waste flows in, in the state, and that will continue.
I, I, my question was, what are they gonna do with that facility?
Yes, well, they're still running it right now, um, and maintaining it, apparently they have enough coming in from other places, and they always did have spot market trash coming in there, it wasn't kept alive on just our volume, so, um...
Steve, what does that mean, spot market trash?
Well, they, they pick up cl, uh, customers, the spot market, which is, you know, the, the, there's a pricing per short-term arrangements between, uh, companies looking to dispose of trash, and they pick them up as a client to bring their trash there, so-
Got it, got it.
It's, it's like a, kinda a-
It's a company municipality, it could be the condo complex, it could be something smaller.
Well, it could be things that are, yeah, it could be smaller, it could be individual trash companies-
Okay.
-making arrangements.
Okay.
Um, now, any trash company or anything, anyone hauling out of member towns is supposed to take it to the destination that SCARA has designated, and that doesn't mean that, you know, those are being honored, that requirement, and there's no enforcement who's gonna enforce it, you need staff to do that, so I don't know, but, so those people might be going, you know, especially if they're close regionally to that incinerator, 'cause it's convenient to the shoreline and stuff, too, but, I mean, they might be getting stuff from Rhode Island, they could be getting it from other places, um, so...
This is really, probably a, a really different question, big, big rabbit hole, but have you heard any chatter about moving away from single stream and focusing on recyclables that would turn a profit?
Not from within SCARA's discussions that I've been involved in, I've not heard that, uh, now, Willamantic Waste, who is the disposal site, separates the stream, you know, we throw it all in, and they separate it.
Right.
And they mar, they, that's how they get to the valuable, uh, segments of the waste stream, and, and those, the markets for those change, too, um, you know, cardboard could be way, and they could go in opposite directions, depending on what's going on in the world at the time, I think the recycling market generally has bounced back some, but our arrangement with Willamantic was not based on changing markets like it had been before, and frankly, the towns are not in a, much of a negotiating or a bargaining position with Willamantic, the alternatives were, you know, pretty much the only game in town, so they kinda use it as an opportunity to get very favorable rates, and in some way, that makes up for, they were taking some losses when this all, the bottom fell out, so they're still making up for that while they're getting ahead, too, so, I, not, as far as back to your original question, I don't think there's gonna be a move in that direction, uh, it's easier to separate it with a, with the equipment that they have into the streams, the different elements of the stream, than it is to have multiple ways in which we collect it at the curb, and have to enforce that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, that's what I think, but...
Okay.
So, that's just kind of a big picture on things, as far as the details of the budget, the only thing that I saw, the, after meeting with the mayor and going through the budget with him earlier, was a, uh, you know, there was a slight reduction in overtime, and then in the waste realm, there was a, a reduction, a return to la, the last year's value, as opposed to the increase I asked for, in the bulky waste disposal line, and, um, you know, I'm not, like, it, it's kinda, it's one of those that depends on the use of the transfer station more than anything else, and where people are going, and we saw with the, the lockdown, people were spending a lot more money at, on things at home, spending a lot of time cleaning out home, and, and we had huge traffic at the transfer station. Now, February, kinda just, the snow just knocked that down to, to a very small trickle, but it's picking up again, so I anticipate another big year in bulky waste, whi, which is why I had sawed a, a bit of an increase, and the only thing that, so, the only thing that's happened since I proposed my budget in its full, uh, array of li, line items, was a, a changed, a slight change in the overtime, and then that bulky waste line, that's it. Uh, and then on the capital side, which I know you've got a separate time for, I had, I had proposed a more, a, a more aggressive approach to funding Lantern Hill Bridge, only because I felt that if there was some magic, a cha, a, a change of heart on Stonington's part, we could move more quickly, and the mayor is probably looking at this more pragmatically, and has, you know, brought that down to more of a temporary, funding the temporary repairs for next year, and then taking it up at some point when he goes forward and works out on MOU with Stonington on m, bigger, you know, more extensive replacement action, uh, and of course, I always throw-
So, Steve, before you move off on that one, um, a, a partially serious comment, partially facetious, I read that the town of Stonington is, they have four hundred thousand dollars in their budget to, uh, restore a tennis court, and I emailed the mayor and suggested we loan Stonington their half of the bridge replacement, and, um, make that public.
Well, I, the mayor had received, and I don't know at what point, you had authorized the mayor to negotiate, uh, an MOU with Stonington.
Right.
The first selectmen of Stonington sent a draft along, and I substantially revised it, uh, and the mayor i-is, I think, working with Stonington to put, you're, you're looking for an appropriate response, or, or way to get Stonington to step up to the plate, that doesn't look favorable to them when they're throwing money at tennis courts, when you got that type of bridge problem out there, and then the, so the MOU's got some language revisions that the mayor is gonna maybe, in some form, s- send along to, to the first selectmen in, uh, Stonington, but I agree, um, I, they should, they, we shouldn't have to pay for their incompetence, and that's what they're asking us to do, and, and without even a promise of stepping up and doing the appropriate replacement that needs to be done as soon as possible, so...
Yep.
However, however that gets put out there, sometimes the, in the realm of public opinion, it's, it's a little bit more powerful, maybe a little shame room-
That was my thought, yeah.
-is do them, it sure is, you know?
Yeah, yep. Okay, so I'm sorry I interrupted, go ahead.
Well, the only other thing is that I had always thrown in the money for the Sandy Hollow guard, guide rail, and it always gets taken out, uh, and, you know-
Excuse me, can I just interrupt? Um, I just need Ian to click on the capital improvements, which is just to the right of the departments, and then we can see, we can follow along with you, Steve.
Where am I going?
Uh, okay.
Oh, over here?
Yeah, and do one, uh, multi-year plan.
Let me know when to stop scrolling.
We will, okay. Public Works is pretty near the bottom.
Huh, it all flows downhill.
Public Works.
Sandy Hollow Bridge.
Yeah, yeah, that's the synopsis, so, there was some, you know, I've seen this happen enough times to not get too excited about anything, it pops up and bears some kind of hope along with it, and that was, a couple legislators got, came out of the blue to the mayor and asked about Sandy Hollow, someone had brought it to their attention, and we just, what's the estimate, what's the estimated cost for that, and we scramble, got it to them, and it just, you know, goes into the legislative hole somewhere, so, it, it, but it, what it does is it, it's a mirage out there that gives you some hope that you don't have to fund it locally, right? And so, this is, it's, it's got a functional component to it, 'cause those cable post rails are not, they're, they're in bad shape, and in some places, they're compromised, and there's been at least two vehicles that have gone into the reservoir, one fairly recently, I thought, uh, through these so-called guide rails that are useless, and they look horrible, too, as they fall apart, and beg the question, what, isn't anyone paying attention to what's going on here? So, suitable thing to do is to replace them with modern-style guide rails, and problem is, it's a quarter of a million dollars, so, I mean, it's a long stretch, obviously, you've said, you've driven over that, you've seen how much open water there is, and the, the guide rails that are there, they're the cable rails, so, since two thousand twelve, I put it in the capital budget, and it's not been funded, and, uh, you know, it's just gonna, I don't know, not something we're gonna do little by little.
So, Steve, that would cover both sides of the road, the, from one bank to the other?
From, from, for where you presently have the cable and post on both sides, so you come down off of one seventeen and hit them, and then to when you go up on the Whalehead side, which isn't the whole stretch, it's where the water-
Right, it's just where the water, that's right.
And that was the last-
Steve, what, what's the relative safety or effectiveness of, uh, cables with solid posts in good condition versus guide rails?
Oh, you, you, I mean, in terms of the relative benefit, I, I don't, you know, there's-
Yeah, so does the car go through the, through the cables, because the, the posts are rotten, or does it go through the cables, because they just don't work?
Well, I think both, um-
Okay.
Yeah, they, they are not designed to keep vehicles within the confines of the, the paved surface, they're mostly designed to allow vehicles to stretch them down and, but without going all the way, you know, through, they, they kind of are like a rubber band, but, and they function in that way.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so, their profile makes a difference, how tall are they, and a lot of times, if, once you get on top of them, of course, that's, at the end of it, you're over them.
Yeah.
Um, and I think, you know, the co, the cost of the cable style might not be that much cheaper, if it is at all, than it, than the, the solid beam rail, which I know-
Yeah.
Aesthetically, you know, con, you know, considering aesthetics, those metal beam rails aren't that pretty, you can-
Nope.
You can get the, the brown style, but I think that there's some negatives to that, too.
Yeah, I, I was just asking, because if, if there was a, a stopgap, meaning if, if we were replacing, not all the posts, but replacing posts, that would, I would hope be less than a complete replacement of all the guide rails, all the cable and posts, with guide rails, so I'm trying to, trying to see a way to get a stopgap.
Right, I'm not thinking that they even consider that as a viable alternative in these days, I mean, those, that particular type of railing has been abandoned, uh-
Yeah.
I mean, and if we were to get a repair done, I'm not sure if you're, you know, what the total cost would be, it'd be quite a bit still, to, to inspect every one of those posts and repair the ones that need to be replaced, and all the labor involved in that might be-
Yeah.
For what you get, not worth it.
Right.
Um, um, yeah, that's- Um, um, yeah, that's, yeah, I think that's, uh, that's about it, um.
Well, um, happy to see the, uh, the mayor gave a, a nice report about the road, uh, surface rating that we just got back. And it's incredible to me how precise the, the system is. You know, we wanted to get better than we were, but not too much. And we're, we're where we want to be, within one and a half points, I think. So, it, it's pretty amazing what, the way that works and I, I think we're lucky to have it.
Yeah, and, and it, it has worked well. And we, as you saw, his report probably cited the fact that we had just got a, a recent report done at the end of last year, so.
He did, yeah.
That's current data. The road surface rating actually that we had peaked at now has been essentially recovered. And the real reason for that was that there was a, um, a whole, a, a carryover of funding from 2019 that the paving contractor couldn't get to in time. And we, we were more aggressive in getting work done last year. So, naturally, there would have been a commensurate boost in the road surface rating. And it happened to fall right at a good time when they were coming in to inspect at the end of that year, so. So, it shows that the amount of funding going into the road program is about what we needed to keep our rating where it's, should, we would like to keep it, right?
Yep, yep, very good. Um, in the line items, um, in the administration area, if you can get to that, Ian, uh, professional services.
Yeah.
And the question, Steve, is we're, we're at 30% of, of our budget for fiscal '21 in spending on, on services. So, I'm just curious about why we're where we are. And I, I know there's sometimes good reasons.
Yeah, let me see, uh, I gotta get to the, my latest run on that. I think what you have may lag where we're at, um.
We're at 37,000 right now.
Yeah, see, which is now, that's about how many percent, that's like 60%, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, we have spent, there was a big slug that, uh, that came out and, and it has to do with the MS4, yeah, the MS4, um, services. And there was a big slug of effort that, uh, that, that we just were invoiced for. Let me, yeah.
I don't know if you want that.
Yeah, I've got, I see, yeah, I, I had, what I did was I made my own spreadsheet, but I hadn't found it. So, it was 37, so now we are at what?
62%.
Yeah, we're more than 60%.
Okay, alright.
Then, and, and there will be, you know, we may slide in under the, I always aim to slide in under, you know, if I can. But I know there's a considerable amount of effort still left between now and the end of the year, now that we're getting out of winter, um, for, for the, um, MS4 administrative services and compliance effort. So, that, I'm not comfortable backing off of that.
No, no, that's right, I, you, the, the previous years, you, um, fiscal '20, you came in with 17, within $17 of what was budgeted. So, the, the history is pretty good.
Yeah.
So, just, just a question.
I know.
Well, '20, we had to bring in 21,000 extra.
That was where we, uh, we had cut too much or something and.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we did cut from, from fiscal '20, we reduced it from 71.9 to 60,000. So, I, I'm not anxious to cut that anymore. We might be going over.
I am, I'm not exactly thrilled with what we're, what this all involves and that particular mandate, to tell you the truth.
You may have mentioned that in the past.
Yeah, you don't want to really know the, probably know the details of it, at least today. Cost benefit is very marginal.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, but.
Um.
I'm not saying that the engineer services are not quality. It's just what we're being told to accomplish, i- the benefit of, the marginal benefit of what they're seeking is, doesn't seem to match the amount of money we have to spend to tell them what we're doing and you know, somehow keeping it there, getting there, but anyway.
Right, right. So, um, on a, on a good note, I happened to run into one of those engineers and he, he complimented you as being one of the better engineers in the state that they've worked with, so there's that too.
They must not work with too many engineers.
I don't, I don't think he was looking for work either, so. Um, but anyway, um, next question is on salt and sand. And just curious about how we, how we purchased, because we budgeted 125,000 and we've spent zero as of December, and I know that can't be the case, so.
Well, we have, a couple things I could speak to there. We are trying our darndest to pay more in salt for the money, the amount of salt we've had delivered. And we are calling corporate offices, their system is broken. We are not getting invoices. Uh, we finally got a drop of some invoices up through, uh, back to when we first started ordering. But even today, we haven't spent nearly as much as we've had pending. So, the zero reflects the fact that they just weren't getting us invoices. And Joe has been trying all kinds of different avenues to get that, that, uh, accomplished. And I'll tell you right now, as of today, we have committed, based on our deliveries, to nearly $86,000 of salt.
Wow.
Out of 125.
Well, if they want to deliver it for free, that's fine with us.
I'm just afraid that we'll get the bills in the next fiscal year.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
We're pushing to get it done, but, but, so 86,000 out of 125 is what we've had delivered. And we presently have a healthy stock of salt, uh, because we were just ordering as we were going and then it just, you know, the weather shut down. We got down to 50 tons in our barn.
Wow.
When you, you know, the whole Driven deal and all that, there was pressure all over the state from people that were trying, you know, we're getting their salt from Driven to find it elsewhere. And so, I think that that affected our supplier to try to help other people beyond their normal clients. So, we got, it was touch and go there for a bit.
Steve, if, if those invoices carry over into next fiscal year, just come and talk to me. We can account for the expense in this year and carry it over as a life-
Well, I can show you exactly what that would be. Uh, if that happens, but, you know, here it is, it's March, I gotta be optimistic that they'll figure this, uh, by June. Uh, I mean, I don't understand when you're owed that kind of tens of thousands of dollars if someone's not saying, hey, you know, what's going on? Uh, crazy, but.
So, last question, I think, um, COVID expenses. And I'm looking at the one under property maintenance, what actually goes into that?
Uh, I think it's like-
No, I took something in the chat, if you want to read it.
Oh, okay, alright.
I, I know that there's some, there's a limited cate- there's, there's certain things that meet that criteria. Probably wipes and, and, uh, and-
Gloves and masks.
Yeah, different things that go to protections and cleanliness and sanitation.
It was, it was basically for anything that we were going to seek reimbursement for under CRF. So, we, we created se- uh, separate line items so that we could easily find those expenses.
Got it. And, and so Marcia's chat says, uh, budgets that include COVID-19 expenses in FY '20, actuals column are there because we spent money that has to be included so the totals match the audit. We don't budget for the expenses, however, but that's why those accounts are showing up, so thank you, and it's that. Counselors?
Yeah.
Questions for Steve?
Yeah, Steve, how's your vehicle fleet?
Okay, uh, you're talking from top to bottom.
Yeah, I mean, just a general sense.
I think we're pretty good.
Or any sore thumb that's sticking up, you know?
No, there's nothing now. I mean, I know we pushed the envelope on the loader a few years back to try to nurse it along and I don't, I, I think we altered the, there, there was a bump up in the reserve, annual reserve appropriation to reduce our life cycles, to get them done at a more appropriate time. But we've got fairly new equipment in some of those categories. So, uh, I think we're in good shape, truck-wise, we're in decent shape. We are looking more so toward retooling the, the type of equipment we have to the services that we provide. So, that might be the big thing that becomes a point of discussion coming up this year into next year. We have a sweeper and a catch basin cleaner, that, that though they've been kept in, in very good material condition, that are both more than 20 years old.
Right, we, we talked about this before, yeah.
Yeah, and they're high-wear equipment. They've been refurbished a number of times, but we're looking at maybe offloading catch basin cleaning and as, at the same time of replacing our sweeper and then, I mean, offloading it in terms of contracting it out.
Right, right.
And then, and then looking at a different type of equipment that's more suited to expanding the kind of things we want to get to that we haven't gotten to. So, a, a rubber tire excavator that can run down the, the road quickly. We, we rented one to get rid of all of the, the ledge that was at the edge of pavement. You might have seen them around, um, variously with a hammer. We rented one for, I think it was two weeks, three, maybe a month. And we're able to get that whole list done. But we've got stuff like rocks in the shoulders that we want to get, so the mower doesn't beat itself up, get that done. But that, so, we're, and then, then it becomes a useful equipment for drainage work and stuff like that. But we also have significant investment in a, 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 uh, a backhoe and, uh, which we already have, and a mini excavator. So, we have equipment to do that type of work. So, we're, we're trying to do this in a way that makes sense, um, and not offload assets at somewhat of a higher loss that we've just purchased, for instance. So, uh, we're gonna have to think about a special piece of equipment for the multi-use pathway from the center to the high school. It's a 10-foot wide path and so you need something in the, we're, we're probably gonna, I would say that we're gonna be on the hook for snow removal on that path because of the nature of its use. And, uh, meaning, you know, our ordinance says people that have a sidewalk in front of their house are responsible to clean it. But I'm not sure it's appropriate to put a 10-foot wide, multi-use path in front of people's houses and they're gonna get that all nice and clean within 24 hours so that people can keep using it. So, I mean, that's part of the discussion going forward as this thing gets un, un, you know, it unfolds. But, um, we're looking at another unit that might have a multi-function that includes that and, and also augments our mowing, roadside mowing at peak times of year when one mower just can't quite keep up and you have grass, you know, encroaching on the road and stuff. So, if there's, it's not so much the na- our fleet and our vehicles are in good shape. It's that maybe it's time to reassess how they align with the services we provide. There's some talk about looking at leasing. Uh, some, some towns have gone to leasing their, some of their bigger trucks as opposed to owning them for 20 years or whatever and seeing what it would cost to, instead of replacing them, start going to a lease arrangement. And then, and then you don't have to bear all the burden that's involved in owning something for 20 years. So, it's more a matter of some research this year than replacement. There's not a whole, we, we might have one small, modest-sized, uh, dump truck that we replace this year, but those wouldn't be falling into those categories I discussed. Um, but I think, I don't think we have any things that are on the verge of, that we're, that we're taking a, a chance on at this stage.
Holding your breath on anything, yeah.
I mean, the, the, like I said, the catch basin cleaner and the, the sweeper are old, but we've really done a lot of work in keeping them serviceable, so.
And your staff is solid still?
Getting better all the time, unfortunately, we lost one that was good, but he got his, I think he's in the right lane for what he wants to do long-term, Josh Ingles, that moved on to full-time National Guard. So, thankfully though, while we were cobbling things along, a couple new guys fell into place that are really good. Um, so we have, we're fully staffed now and some of the least pleasant employees we've had over the years are now gone. All it takes is one to really screw a place up too, badly.
Yeah, especially in a small shop, yeah.
Yeah. So, where is, in as good a spot as I've seen.
Good to know.
I can jump on that horse and ride into the sunset anytime.
No, 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 no. I, I want to jump on the, on the soapbox about leasing though, and I'll make it short. Um, I'd, I'd like to see a good economic rationale for leasing because I don't think there is one for a municipality.
Why not, yeah?
Yeah, the reason companies lease, and I, I lecture about this, I know, but the reason companies lease is they can write off the interest and the expense as an expense rather than show it as, as an, an asset on their books. Municipalities don't have that advantage, uh, they don't get that advantage. And so, basically, when you lease something, you're paying somebody to make money on your product that you're borrowing from them and paying them money to loan. So, I, I just don't see how you can, there's no way they're gonna own a truck and lose money doing it and, and be able to do it for any less than we can, in my opinion. If, if there's a better argument, I, I just want to see it.
Well, I haven't looked at any of the numbers. A lot of times you get ideas thrown at you and, and then it gets proof-texted by other towns that somehow are doing it. And, uh, I have, my inclination is, is against it, but I said, I'll look at the numbers. It's all gonna boil down to numbers.
Right, right.
You know, it.
And that's, that's the right, right way to look at it, so I'll stop, thank you.
Yeah, that's part of the equation in looking at the, these numbers is not just the capital cost, but the life cycle repair costs. And when, and when we get to year 15 of some of these big trucks, we're talking big potential costs. We just got a truck back that we sent out for injectors and other things that had gone on it. After seven, it's a 17-year-old truck now, 17 years, a magic number, $10,500 bill I just paid for that. So, it's not just the capital cost, but when you get around to that type of age on these vehicles, if you're gonna nurse them along for 20 years, you gotta look at the life cycle repair costs.
Right.
As well.
Right.
That you're not going to absorb if you get rid of these things at a, a quicker rate, but. Um, and we're kind of unique too. Another side of it is we have a fleet of snowplow route trucks that you can't possibly, keenly to leave, put the nu- amount of miles on that you should in a given year. I mean, you're plowing every storm with every one of them and then you get to the construction season, you're throwing two or three of them out a day. And some of them don't get moved much at all during the whole interim period of time unless you make a concerted effort to get them out there and on the road. So, they're, you know what I mean, that you're, there's a, a cost per, the value per mile used too in there. And, uh, we don't put the miles on them that, that someone who might lease vehicles would typically put on vehicles, right? It's another basis for leasing is, you may throw a lot of miles on these things in the early years of these things and, and you need to move them along. We don't, we don't get rid of our vehicles because we put a lot of miles on them.
Yeah.
Uh, not the big trucks anyway.
Yep. So, that, that might be interesting. If, if, if a leased vehicle could be leased for part of the year, that would be a, a good economic ar- argument. I don't know if they do that, but, but that would make-
Yeah, I, I wonder.
Yeah, lease plows for the winter and then send them back.
Six-month lease every, every, at the end of every year, yeah, I don't know. I wonder what it would be in, what these companies would be in it for.
Well, if they could send it out for construction work during the summer and plowing during the winter, that'd be perfect. And that wouldn't make a lot of-
Yeah.
Can I ask a question, Bill? Can we change the topic?
Yeah, please, sure.
Are we ready? Um, I'm looking at the tree removal line.
Yeah.
At the end of December, we were at 8% expended, but the, but the, but the budgeted amount for the year is a drastic drop from last year. And I'm actually curious to know what the status is, especially with the ash borer's coming through.
Interesting you say ash borer's, I just zipped in here after looking at a couple of big ashes that were, uh, I just marked for- I just marked for every source to take down because they were wiped out, uh, down on Colonel Laided Highway, across from the church down there. Um, at any rate, I, as of right now, I have spent the entire tree removal budget.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm at a hundred percent.
Okay, so much for that.
But why, why it was so much less was because there was a supplemental appropriation the year before and this huge amount of money, and it wasn't enough to get all of the gypsy moth kill. So, I transferred money into, from other line items to that budget. So, that was not what was appropriated. Every year, only four thousand appropriated to that.
Okay.
And what I typically have done is use town aid road money for not only that account, but any other account that needed more money in road infrastructure. Rarely does anything in the, in the operating budget cover all of our needs. Uh, bituminous concrete, that's already spent. Uh, it was spent before winter. Street signs, that's kinda slowed down, but guide rails, if I was gonna do a, a major amount of guide rail work, three thousand dollars isn't gonna get you what you need. So, the tree removal budget is just for the minimum necessary to take care of emerging work that might come up, that you have to call out and get a crew for. Uh, and if we don't use it for that, we use it for more routine things. But I dip in, I go into town aid road. This year, I've already gone into town aid road beyond what I spent here to get set up to do more tree work, so... That is kind of a, it looks, it, it gives you an impression that doesn't show what's actually budgeted year to year because we had so much to do the last couple of years. And now with the ash trees falling into that category, uh, seems like one leaf count, one leaf out hits this year, we're gonna be getting another huge list. Uh, and those typically are massive trees when you find them in the road right of way. These two I just looked at are massive and they're hanging right over the lines.
Thank you.
Anything else, Sandra, Tom?
No.
Good.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Okay.
Thanks, Steve.
I, I should've mentioned, folks, if, if I didn't, maybe I did. Um, I'm hoping we can come back to capital improvement, uh, in a couple of, in the next two sessions, um, only because I was, I was trying to do the same analysis on capital that, that, on SIP that we have done on expenses and I just couldn't get it done before the meeting today. So, we, we may have to ask a lot of questions of department heads after the fact, so apologize for that.
Okay.
Um, and, and also, um, Ed Lynch, I texted Ed. He said he was planning to be there at four thirty and I just said, uh, could you do four? And he hasn't, hasn't replied yet.
He's next week. Parks and Rec is, and Senior Center is next week.
Oh, sorry, he, he was out there and I took a soon. He was next.
I mean, he's got the wrong Thursday on his own calendar.
No, no, I'm just saying, I just saw him and said, oh, he must be next, but he's probably doing something else.
Well, if he does have the wrong Thursday, he'd be late anyway.
Oh, okay. He has something to do with Steve or Roxanne.
Or possibly me, he might have money.
Oh, he could be. Like I said, he looks like you're a case of a...
I'll go see if he's looking for me.
He's right down the end there.
So, did you feel any effects from the second shot here?
None, nothing. I had Pfizer, then I felt absolutely nothing. Now, a lot of people got sick. I was expecting to, you know, I was prepared, but nothing.
Yeah, that's why my wife and I are gonna spread ours out. So, if one does get sick, the other one is able to help.
Usually, if it only lasts supposedly twenty-four hours.
Yeah, a day, they say, within a day of getting it, it, it lasts another day.
You may just be tired, so you end up in bed for the day.
There was a school in Syracuse that, um, and they apparently sent a team of vaccinators to the school and did all the teachers the same day. And thirty percent of them called out sick, they had to close the school.
You know, the statistic shows that older people get fewer symptoms on shot number two than younger. So, there, there is advantage to age in this particular case.
Finally.
We're already losing our immunity, so when we get the, the shots, it builds it up, but not to a point where we have significant symptoms.
Yep, yep.
Yay.
You're saying, you're saying, you're saying we're tough?
I'm saying that we're losing our immunity, so I don't know, if you can interpret that out well.
I believe so.
Oh.
Uh, let's see.
I mean, I would, WPCA...
Sip in here after, and then four thirty it says Ed Lynch, but, you know, we could swap those if you...
Just a reminder to everybody, your water and sewer budgets, um, are... Did I send those electronically, Bill?
Yes.
Oh, good, okay. And then there are also, if you have a copy, a paper copy, there, they should be in the back, but hard to read.
So, while we wait, we, we could just go through the SIP. I, I just don't have any questions prepared and I, I didn't have anything to compare to.
I'm disappointed that nobody sat in on this.
Me too.
Hillary was there for a while, and I think she left before we started, didn't she?
Well, even in previous years, we really only have like one or two people.
Yeah, Mike Cherry normally would come in.
Oh, that's true.
That's usually the only real constant.
Ed, Ed Cindy's gonna log on right now.
Is it cold in here?
A little bit.
I think that might be air on.
Another advantage of Zoom, you can control your own atmosphere.
I was just gonna make some smart remark about, I don't feel cold.
Of course, I keep my windows open, so it's, it's cold in here all the time.
You looking for me?
Huh?
Are you looking for me?
The Capitol, right?
Oh, the actual department heads don't have to sit on the Capitol.
Oh.
Okay, since you're here, since you're here, right?
Yeah, I asked the mayor if I should attend, he said, yeah, it wouldn't hurt. I know we usually meet in his office, but we didn't consider it like before.
So, Bill, Scott Johnson is here to talk about Capitol.
Oh, hey, Scott. How you doing?
Hey, I saw you out there, they said, oh, no, we're not too...
They said arrive fifteen minutes early in case you're ahead of schedule.
So, Scott, we're, uh, we're waiting for Ed Lynch to join us. If you wanna quick talk about Capitol for Parks and Rec, let's, let's do it.
Do it.
All right.
So, we're looking at the multi-year, we're looking at, right?
I'm just looking at F twenty-two.
Oh, Ed's on, Ed's on too, okay.
So, this, we have one multi-year, technically we did last year, it's for the basketball kind of place. Uh, this year was seven thousand, five thousand, the next one is a year. Um, we're also asking to replace the park and rec truck, because it's two thousand and four, it's fairly old and Andy said it's, it's due up. Um, Highland Lake, we gotta get, uh, new aerators, the ones that are currently there, they're, they're, they're lifespan, um, they're at the point that we might have to replace the motors. And it's, you know, replace the motor to get a brand new unit for about the same cost with all the new technology. Um, and we're not paying every year to fix those, um, before we put them back in. Um, they, they take a beating in the water. Um, then we're also gonna try and do some upgrades to the beach. There's a lot of issues with people with the leeches, uh, kinda wanna regrade the beach, uh, maybe do some water, uh, quality, you know, where...
You're saying the leeches?
Apparently, it's, uh, everybody's afraid to swim there.
Oh, the Highland Lake?
Yeah, leeches.
Oh, I was just out with a kid.
Um, but there's like ways to treat the water naturally to help, you know, make it so the fish can survive and eat the leeches and kinda eat some of that, uh, like the muck at the bottom where they hide. So, then basically the fish just have a field on the leeches.
When I worked there as a lifeguard, we used to drop salt blocks in the swimming area and that would keep them out of the swimming area.
Then it also is bad for the fish, so we're looking at some other, they have like very, like natural bacterias you can put in that'll eat, uh, you know, the algae and the muck at the bottom, which then allows the fish to eat the leeches. And then maybe even stock it, because it hasn't been stocked in a while. Um, they used to have a fishing tournament there every year that would get stocked for the tournament. Unless they stopped that, they haven't stocked in the lake, so.
I don't wanna say the same, but the fishing there is great. I don't think it needs to be stocked, fish there quite often during the summer.
Um, then also do some improvements to the volleyball court, um, as well, if we have enough money left. Uh, Erickson, we need, um, new canopies for the, the temporary pavilion there, they're getting to the end of their life. Uh, we, well, still they'll use the same frame, so we just have to get replacement, uh, canopies themselves. Then we're gonna, we need to refresh the stone dust, uh, walking past it there. And then remove a few trees. And then Crispy Hill, we've had a lot of security concerns there. Um, and then actually a tree fell on the backstop, so we're looking to fix the backstop, uh, install some solar lighting in the parking lot, um, and then both touch up the playground wood chips so it meets the ASTM standards, uh, the borders. And then there's some, some dead trees and stuff that, uh, that a lot of trees fall on that park. Um, they've been causing damage to, you know, fences, backstops, costs a lot of money to have removed, so...
What park is that?
Uh, it's off of East Drive, uh, Crispy Hill.
Oh, okay, yeah, I know where that is, yeah.
Um, yeah, so we had one fall, take out the backstop. Um, there's a lot of, you know, they're hanging over, a lot of dead ones, we'll get rid of. That way it's not falling on anything, playground or anything.
Kids.
Yeah. Um, then, oh, we talked about ten square, and then we're looking to just remove some trees in some of the other parks we haven't done in a number of years. All these storms have been downing trees and caused a lot of damage and costly, you know, it's very costly to remove the trees actually too. So, actually, if it doesn't fall all the way down, if it falls all the way down, usually public works can chop it up and take it out. So, if it gets stuck on another tree, the hanger, you know, sometimes that's a thousand dollars to remove one tree.
Yeah, which didn't show up here. That's a pretty expensive truck, it's sixty-one-five.
So, also has, includes the...
It's coming out of the conveyor? It's coming from the conveyor pack?
Yep, so I'm hoping we can get it a little less than that, um, because it, it's also including the truck, the liner, uh, the lift, electric lift gate, um, you know, the logo on the truck. Because it has to be able to accommodate and tow the mobile restroom. Um, so we have to get a stuff, you know, the hitch for it and all that. I actually was doing some pricing before and we might be able to get it a little cheaper.
Is that a quad cab or is it a, uh...
Um, I think it was just a regular, because we don't really need the extended cab. We more need like the bed. Um, actually, we might be able to get it for the truck itself, I think, for like forty-six thousand and then we actually might be able to get like the liner through, like, you know, wherever we order the truck. So, that might even save a little money, so we don't have to go and actually get it, you know, sprayed. Um, and then we might just have to put the hitch on.
Yeah, I mean, if you, the, the other, that, what's that, Northeast Trucks right there on Route twelve? They're pretty reasonable and a lot of municipalities go there. So, you might wanna check into that, not that I'm advertising for.
And then the mayor also mentioned we're getting a few other vehicles. We might get a good deal if we're, you know, getting three or four vehicles from like the same company, so that could be an option too.
Bill?
Yes.
Can you remind me what the threshold is for when someone, something shows up in SIP versus regular maintenance? And I'm, I'm look, I'm looking at like playground wood chips.
Yeah, I, honestly, Andrew, I have the same question myself. Um, I, I'm, and that's one of the questions I wanted to ask. I, I, there's a lot of stuff in SIP that looks like maintenance items to me.
I mean, I would love to see all of this done, I'm just wondering where is the best...
Yeah.
Where is the best place to... Oh, yeah, Marsha, you're here.
I'm always here. We, um, we tend to, anything that's not like a normal expense or a regular expense, I should say, we tend to put into capital so that we can try to keep the general fund, uh, funding as stable as possible or as consistent as possible, if you will. So, if it's, uh, like a one-time buying wood chips, um, or, you know, they do it every five years or whatever, um, I encourage people to put it in capital so, uh, that it is just more consistent, a more consistent load on the general fund.
It's all coming back to me now.
So, we can't use the, um, you know, like what they have at the transfer station has to be ASTM certified, um, so that's kind of a little more expensive. It's a bit of engineered wood fiber technically, not wood chips, um, to meet the playground standard. And then we have to have a certain amount of depth, um, and then there's compacted wood chips underneath that won't be counted in the depth to meet the safety requirements.
Other questions, cameras. For Scott?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Scott, we, we may come back to you just because, uh, we weren't prepared, uh, with all our SIP questions, so, um, we'll keep you posted and thank you for coming.
Okay. Do you guys, do you want me to stay or, you mean later?
Uh, no, no, not, it won't be today. It'll be one of the, uh, next sessions, uh, this, this Monday or next Thursday.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, so Ed Lynch has joined Chairman of WPCA and, uh, we have both budgets sent to us, but I think we only need to look at water because we don't approve the sewer budget. But we can certainly ask questions if we have them and the two are tied closely together. Ian, are you able to share the WPCA water budget?
Uh, yeah, let me come up with something real quick.
If, um, it looks like I'm, have the ability to share, I have it open, if you want, I can just do it.
Yeah, if you wanna do that, can, can you share?
Um, you have to stop and then I can.
Okay, let me...
Or no, you, well, yeah. You should have a red button at the top that says stop sharing.
Ah, yes, thank you. Sorry, I'm a little, I don't really use Zoom. There we go.
I think this is water.
That is correct.
Yep, how's the, uh, how's the front tires look to everybody?
A little bit cropped.
Okay, so...
Bill, you can probably hide previous, I've put in a lot of previous years just so you guys have them to look at, like during the meeting yourselves, but for preview purposes, you can probably hide a lot of those.
Yeah, so let me do this, I'll just scroll over. Still too much. All right, hang on, let me hide some stuff. Now, tell me if it gets larger or smaller when I do this. What did that do to the font size?
Uh, it made it larger, but we can't see everything.
Right. And let me, uh, get rid of some of this stuff over here too.
I'd say that's pretty good.
Okay, good, let me go a little wider, see what that next column is, changes, okay, that's helpful, is that good?
Yep, we can see the twenty-two proposed and what twenty-one is currently and the year's date, so I'd say that's everything.
Good.
Or let somebody else have a request.
Okay, so, um, Ed, you are muted, if you are able to comment, uh, the floor is yours. I don't see Ed moving, so he may have lost his connection.
I can see him moving, but he's still muted.
Okay. Ed, can you hear us? Yep, done mute. So you see him moving and I don't, that's why, I see you moving, Marcia.
I see Ed moving, but he doesn't have a cap filter up, so we're good there.
Still nothing. All right, Ethan, do you wanna say a few words about the budget and what we talked about?
I was, yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I mean, I, I know this budget just as well as Ed may be possibly even better. Um, so you'll notice all the yellow highlighted lines there are contractual increases, like salaries with Grattan Utilities, um, and, uh, things of that nature, so those are obligational, you know, increases. The first two top lines, uh, WPCA, uh, decided to increase those lines, I believe by five percent due to a five percent increase in the rate that we have been billed. Now, those two lines pay for the water that runs through Route twelve and one seventeen, those are estimated amounts, obviously those amounts fluctuate year to year based on the water usage, but, um, this year we did a five percent increase due to the rate increase from Grattan Utilities. Um, everything else, basically, what else we, let me pull it up on my computer so I have a bigger version of it.
So I'm highlighting the water purchase, 'cause those are the big dollar items that, that, uh, Ian was just talking about.
Yeah, the.
In light yellow.
Oh, yeah, my mistake, it was the ones below the yellow. I mean, everything else, any, and, other than that, everything else is contractual, and whatever else wasn't contractual, basically say the same, it's a pretty, you know, consistent budget every year, we don't really move around too much with it.
And, uh, a good point too, that I like to make every year is, WPCA is now contributing a hundred thousand dollars a year to CNR, their own CNR, which didn't used to happen quite a few years ago, so that's money being set aside for, for maintenance.
And during the WPCA meeting, it was brought up, you'll notice that the year-to-date for the dues and fees is over expended. That's because of a, uh, the DPH fees, which were, we charge the customer and then we have to go back and pay it out to the state, and so, um, we don't budget it because it's basically a wash, it comes in and then it goes right out, back out to the state. So that's why you'll see the dues and fees are over expended, uh, due to that DPH fee that we pay to the state.
Yep.
And next year is the last year that that is in existence, so it was a three-year fee, I, I, I was, I'm to understand.
Cool, didn't know that. So then, the, go ahead, Andrew.
Uh, I also see that, uh, an accounting services audit line, so they do their own audit, is that an annual thing?
No, that's with the town, it's just an allocated amount that they, they pay.
Okay.
The financial services fee, Bill, I'm sure you're gonna chuckle that that's being brought up.
Yep.
That's a fee that town charges for the services I provide, Marcia provides, tax collector for collecting, um.
Oh, okay.
The, uh, assessments for Cheryl, who does accounts payable, for our fiscal assistant, who does the bank recs, so any kind of financial services that staff in the town hall provide for the WPCA.
Okay, and how do you, how do you figure that number, is this like?
Uh, I have a, yeah, I have a spreadsheet that we take the hourly rate, multiply it by, uh, one point two-five, which brings us into the cost of estimated fringe benefits as well. And then we kinda do a ballpark on the amount of hours per year that an employee would spend, uh, doing certain services, we have narratives, um, that it kind of explain what each service is, like assessment collection, kinda like a little narrative about what that process is. Um, yeah, Marcia and I provide a lot of the audit work, all, all of the audit work actually for the WPCA, and so it's kinda like an estimated, like, uh, number of hours, and then we multiply the number of hours by the hourly cost.
Got it, thank you.
And that's, that's been a big point of conversation. Sorry.
Go ahead, Bill.
That, that's been, been a big topic year over year, the WPCA has always complained that they have to pay money to the, to the finance department, um, but we got a really good written and verbal explanation this year from Marcia and Ian, and I think they are finally on board with, with what the town is going for the WPCA.
I'm back.
Hey, Ed.
Sorry, I, I have Ring Central, Zoom, Skype, and somehow they all take over the sound board, and the board just crashes.
Well, apologies for, for you missing out on the previous discussion, we just, uh, decided that the, uh, WPCA is gonna be charged double the current rate for finance services.
That doesn't bother me, but I know some people aren't gonna be pleased.
Yeah.
My last point in that was that the, uh, that cap, the Excel spreadsheet that I use to calculate, we charge the, that, I believe it's twenty-six thousand in the water budget, that's just part of it, the sewer budget also has a portion, and together it's forty thousand dollars, and our current, uh, spreadsheet calculates the cost about to be forty-eight thousand, so, and that's to, you know, understand that we're estimating these numbers, they might be give or take in some areas, so we're obviously not gonna charge for the penny of what we're estimating, so it's pretty significantly below what we're estimating, just to leave room for.
I think, I think that should, in the, in the future, I would think that should be a good number, because when we go for rate increases, which we need to do for the next two years, because Grattan Utilities is increasing their water cost by five percent per year, we should, you know, we should trap that number so that, you know, whatever that is, it could be a point five percent increase or point two, point three, we can accommodate you.
Good point.
I'm, I mean, so I, I'd like that to be as honest a number as it can be, I mean, I, obviously, we need, we, we, we shouldn't have the town supporting WPCA and financial services if, 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 if we can avoid it.
Yeah, WPCA is an enterprise fund, which means it can't be subsidized, it can't make money, and it can't lose money.
Right.
The, the other two points that I highlighted were the general obligation bond, and that's where the WPCA is paying back the taxpayers for the infrastructure improvements over the last twenty years, in, uh, Route twelve, Route seventeen, and several other mains.
Yeah, so the, the increase isn't too significant from last year, the one-four-five-nine, five-two-four-ninety-seven is, um, I think, what did we do, we raised the, uh, water cost by five percent. So that, that brought it up, um, trying to think what the, what the total number was, was that twenty-five thousand, anyway, whatever that number is, that's what we brought it up. And unfortunately, we're gonna be doing that again next year, 'cause they're raising, raising it again. The only, um, well, the only capital I see is there's a possibility we're gonna have to purchase a new meter for Fox Run. The meter we have there right now is, is, is not measuring properly, and we're, I think we're losing a lot of money, so we're gonna have to upgrade it. It, it is an expensive meter, it's twenty-two thousand dollars, so that's, that's one water cost I see us doing.
It's been a lot of years, if, if we're not charging for the water use, there's a lot of water going through there.
Right, yeah, it's got two sizes, and it's, it's not, you know, when they're not using much water, I think it leaks through and it's not measuring, so we, we need to, we, we need to get a better meter in there. Um, the only other ca, the only other capital, I'm not sure it's, it's gonna be that we need to, uh, reduce the liability to town on the, on the Gallup Hill tank, and I, I don't have quotes from that yet, so I don't know, there is some asbestos, um, and lead paint in the bunker that, that we need, that we need to take care of, but that's, again, I don't know what that's gonna cost, I, I haven't got the bids back.
So the, the Gallup Hill tank is a tank on Gallup Hill Road that used to feed the Highlands, it no longer serves the Highlands, and it's gotta come down, so Ed is, and the WPCA are getting bids to have it demolished, and they, and the asbestos and lead was a study they had to do to see what's in there before they take it down, so.
Yeah, there's a big bunker with electrical in it, I think, uh, I think Fred remembers that, uh, the power company didn't even know it was tied in, we, we finally got it disconnected, so.
It's common.
I don't think there's anything else.
So Ed, Ed, the, uh, the mayor had to go to an appointment that he couldn't avoid, um, he commented that the Ledyard Center tank has visible rust showing. I wasn't aware of that, um, but we last discussed about, I think about three months ago, we asked Grattan Utilities about the condition of that tank.
Yes.
And they do an interior camera study, but I'm surprised that they haven't said anything about the exterior showing rust, but that, it may be do. Um, that, that tank is sixteen years old, or fifteen years old, so it may be time to have that painted. So he asked that we take a look at that and.
Okay.
And, uh, report back.
Yeah, I, I will, uh, I'll talk to Ray, um, today, tomorrow, just to see what, what our options are in that. Um, now, the whole of their tank is a little bit younger, so I don't, but maybe we should look at that tank too, 'cause we're responsible for its maintenance.
Yep, that's right. Yeah.
Okay.
So, councilors, questions?
I have no questions.
I'm surprised there's no questions on the Ledyard Center study, so we do have seven quotes coming in that we're evaluating for sewer. And it's gonna take a couple, it's gonna take a week or two to evaluate these, they're, they're all over the map.
Ed, did, uh, where did the discussion end up with, if we put a sewer line toward the high school, uh, running it in conjunction with the project to put the multimodal use, multi-use, whatever that trail is, the sidewalk on Colonel Ledyard Highway, is that still a consideration?
Yes, and we approached all the bidders that that is one of the options that they need to consider for design.
Good, great, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think a two-and-a-half inch line would serve us quite a bit of, of development there.
Yeah, is, so is that a force main?
Yeah, it would have to be, because there's, if you notice, the, there's a hill that we have to, uh, go over to get to the high school.
Yep. And if it wasn't a force, it would be a lot bigger in diameter, right?
Yeah, that's correct, and not only that, but, um, you probably could assess people along the way, but it's not likely when it's a pressurized line.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, councilors, any other questions?
Um, Bill, I just wanted to thank Ed for his service on the committee. It's important work, and I know it's not, sometimes probably not the most exciting committee or commission, at least I never found it to be. So I, I try to be attentive, and I really, I just wanted him to know, I really appreciate, uh, his work.
Well, well, you're certainly welcome, but us engineers do find, us geeks do find it kind of interesting, so.
I can assure you, the WPCA is always excited.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you, Ed.
All right, guys, so, uh, no questions on the water budget, and, uh, I'm assuming it's gonna be voted upon this, this month, or next month?
Uh, this comes up separately for the council to vote on, I don't recall where it is, whether it's on our agenda this week, but yes, it, it'll be coming up shortly.
Yeah, I only ask so if, you know, if you want my presence, 'cause I'm sure the, you know, the other council people would probably want, if they had some questions, I'd be available.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll have to look and see when it is, I, I haven't looked at this week's, or next week's, um, agenda, but it should be coming up, so, thank you.
Okay, good, I'm gonna leave, you guys have fun.
Okay. We are.
Yep.
Thanks, Ed. Okay, I don't think we have anything else unless I'm missing something. Um, I don't think we're ready for budget work yet, usually we go through the whole budget after we've asked all the questions, so, um, if any of the councilors have anything they wanna discuss or add or comment, let's, let's do it, otherwise I think we're done.
I don't have anything, Bill.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, everyone, for attending, and, uh, we'll see you on Monday.
All right, thank you.
See ya.
All right, and good afternoon, bye, thank you, Marcia. Thank you, Ian.
You're welcome. All right, I'm gonna end.
Okay, good.